Alright, it is 10 a.m. on December 6th. We are here for a regular meeting of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners. We can just hop right in if everyone could make sure their cellphones are silenced. And we'll start with a Pledge of Allegiance at a moment of balance.
So you know guys, I'm listening to a meeting, so if I don't answer you, it's because of that.
To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. And we have the recording on, yeah. Take a look at the agenda, I think there were some items.
Yes, if we could remove item number 19. Discussion and consideration of the development agreement with Adam Berger Development LLC for housing at 10,200.
Okay.
Not ready to present everything.
Just quickly, so we can, do we have, do we have a, do we have beyond next?
It'll be on the 17th agenda.
Seventeenth, okay.
Yeah, because our next regular.
Okay, so not on the special.
No, next week will just be millennial project.
Okay. Anything else? Or is that?
Um, that, I believe is it.
Okay. Then look for a motion to approve the agenda with that one removed item number 19.
So moved?
Second.
Great, call for vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have the approved agenda. Community information items. I'll just note, and it'll come up in the agenda item, but we did receive $500,000 underfunded courts grant. Just learned about that yesterday, I believe. So thanks to staff and everyone who helped pull that grant together. And that's it for me.
I, um, the fire department is working with Arkansas River Watershed Collaborative and the state and has a burn plan for the community field. Burn piles from the mitigation that's gone on. And so on December 17th, that is the plan to burn starting at community field. They won't burn all the piles, they plan to burn about 50 of them. And if the weather conditions so deter or cause a change of location from that community field location, they'll move up to CMC and start burning piles there. But if all goes to plan, the burn piles burning will only happen in the field. There will be some smoke, so we're trying to, there should be things in the paper next week and social media. The fire department's getting things out on social media, so. Uh, I think that is all I have.
Are there any plans for the CMC burn piles?
They were done, the community field were, are the older piles and the drier piles. And so, um, they're looking into the spring to, like through the rest of the winter, if they can do, burn more of those piles and they can manage that, um, they'll continue to chip away at that. Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay. Any, okay. Fair, then we'll move to public comment. Will, I think we have a sign up sheet on paper circular, oh, thank you, here in the room. And then we'll turn to Zoom for folks on Zoom who wish to make public comment. If you can click that, you know, raise your hand button and then it'll compile a list and we'll, we'll get to you once we have comments in the room. We do ask folks to try to limit it to three minutes, please. We have a packed agenda. And also, I just, I just wanted to say typically, we don't engage in a big discussion on public comment. The purpose for us is to raise issues that we need to be aware of. And then we'll circle back with appropriate action from us, from staff. I know sometimes that feels like a stony silence from the board in response to public comment. Please don't take it that way. We take these comments on board and, you know, we just don't want to get into a lengthy discussion on issues. We're not crafted for that discussion forum. So again, don't take a lack of lengthy response as, uh, in the wrong way. So with that, um, thank you. I have Mary Colombo was first. And if you could just take, state your name and an address in the county, just for the record.
My name is Mary Colombo, I live at 328 Matt Yell Drive. And I'm here in support of the sanctuary status. I believe there's a range of benefits for community. One that's top of mind is just ensuring that everyone in our community feels like they're able to raise safety concerns with our law enforcement and feel like there's that dialogue that's open for everyone, regardless of their status. I really feel concerned about that inability to communicate things like domestic violence and other things in folks' lives. I really want those channels to be open for everyone, no matter who they are or what their status is. So I'm just here to put some support.
Great, thank you. Grayson Cooper.
Grayson Cooper, 125 West 17th Street. Here today is myself, not representing anyone or any other organization. Echo a lot of what Mary says. I'm here to support Sanctuary County or whatever protections or assurances or value we can of our community, including our immigrant community. The Supreme Court has repeatedly upheld the rights of undocumented people and to exist in this country. So Arizona versus United States 2012 held that it is not against the law for undocumented immigrants to exist peacefully within the United States. Plyler v. Doe 1982 held that students could not be denied free public education on the basis of their documentation status or their parents. So I think it's really important for us to recognize that, you know, this is a substantial part of our community. It's an important part of our community and they deserve to feel safe as the rest of us do and appreciate your consideration for whatever we can do to reinforce that.
Great, thank you. Amanda Fitzpatrick.
Hi, my name's Amanda Fitzpatrick, I live at 420 West 7th Street. And I also am going to speak in favor of making Lake County a sanctuary county. In doing this, we're just asking y'all to take care of all of the residents in Lake County. There's not evidence to support an increase of like population or a major change in demographics, especially given Colorado's existing policies around immigration. We don't really have reason to believe that making Lake County a sanctuary county will really change our community that much. What it would do is protect people who already live here, work here, pay taxes here. And it would affirm that Lake County is a community that takes care of all of its residents and everyone is welcome here. That's the Lake County I know and love and I'm proud to be a part of and I want to see. As commissioners, your role is to support and take care of residents. And so by making it a sanctuary community, that's what you would be doing. Thank you.
Great, thank you Amanda. Carla Saylor?
Hi, Carla Saylor, 301 East Fourth. I am here to express support for a sanctuary status for the county. I do echo a lot of the comments that have already been made. I want folks to have access to services and support, especially from law enforcement, and not be afraid to, to access that when they need that. I also am here because I've heard a lot of fear in our community and there's been a lot of division around this issue. So I'm also here to promote a message of inclusion and support for our immigrant community who recently hasn't felt that. And like Grayson said, it's a substantial and important part of our community here. And I know that the folks who are feeling afraid of what sanctuary status would mean have some valid and good reasons to be afraid of that status. But the messaging that's been attached to that has been really harmful to the immigrants that live here and that are a big part of why we love living here too. They're a part of our community. And so I really just want to spread that message of inclusion and hope and support and belonging for all of our neighbors. Thanks.
Thank you, Farley.
I can't tell if she's there, guys.
Next person indicating wish to speak is Peter Day.
Peter Day, 27 Daisy Drive. I'm talking on a totally different topic. You know, I'd like to call some attention to the OHB ordinance that was passed last winter. And I just haven't seen any, any public information about, about implementation of that and a lot of the discussion items that occurred during the moratorium period. One was consideration of a sticker program. One was a program to, you know, for, there was concern about, about youths, you know, not, not using OHBs correctly. And there was going to be some sort of a, a training program for that. There were going to be changes to the model traffic law, you know, to incorporate some of the OHB considerations that were actually taken out of the ordinance because they would fit better into a revised traffic code. I don't think that's, that's happened either. And my biggest concern is that, that last winter, one of the reasons, well, for finishing up the ordinance after OHB moratorium was so that the recreation, commercial recreation permits could be issued. To my knowledge, you know, no commercial recreation permits have been issued and the OHB operators that, you know, I think the three that, that have been operating for a long time and are, are kind of have a monopoly on this, you know, they don't have specialty use permits. There haven't been any, any applications to the, to the board. And even more concerning that is that at least one operator has, has operated without a conditional use permit for years now. And so, you know, why, you know, why can't, you know, why is that operator still operating without a commercial, without a, a conditional use permit? So, so, you know, just because you're all outgoing as a, as a board, you know, it'd be, it'd be great if you could, you know, kind of, you know, put some attention on this and, and help, you know, the new board and maybe, you know, if some of these tasks that were discussed haven't been assigned to, you know, to staff, maybe that could still be done while, while you're in power here. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Peter. Next on the list is Cipriano Guerola.
Hey, I'm Cipriano Guerola, 749 Highway, New York. I'm speaking, I'm sorry. I'm speaking today as a long-term resident of Lake County where my family has lived here since 1995. Over these years, I've come to know this community as one defined by its warmth, compassion, and dedication to helping one another. Lake County has always welcomed people from all walks of life, regardless of where they come from, what they look like, or what language they speak. It is that spirit of community that has made this place feel like home, not just for my family, but for so many others. While we may not always agree on every issue or share the same perspective, the goal today is not to focus on our differences. It's about recognizing the core values that have made Lake County a special place, values of empathy, solidarity, and kindness. Declaring Lake County Sanctuary County would be an act of humanity. And I believe it is a step towards preserving and strengthening the sense of community that we all cherish and have loved over the years. Declaring a sanctuary county does not mean that thousands of people will suddenly move here. Our community already faces challenges and the people who live here are doing their best to make ends meet. This declaration is not about overloading our resources or making life more difficult for anyone. Instead, it's about ensuring that all of us, whether we've lived here for decades or have recently arrived, are protected and supported. Since this sanctuary designation would safeguard our neighbors, our children and students, our coworkers and local business owners.
Fans.
As a reminder that here in Lake County, we believe in the dignity of all people, regardless of their background or immigration status. I encourage each of you to look beyond the sensationalism of the media narrative and engage in genuine compassionate conversations with those around you. Talk to your neighbors, your friends, your coworkers, hear their stories, and really reflect on the kind of Leadville we want to preserve for future generations. A Leadville that remains a welcoming, safe, and supportive place for all of us.
Great, thank you, Cipriano. Mark, when you are listed, but there's no indication of whether you wish to speak or not. Okay. That is the end of our written list, but I know some people came in later. If anyone in the room wishes to make a public comment, this is the moment. Please.
So.
Can, just for the record, can you state your name and where you live in Lake County?
1236. I, I don't know because, well, my dad died and I'm a totally immigrant. But I just feel like, hold on. That it would be putting a red mark if legislation changed. This would be the first place someone will come. And it really scares me because of legislation, that they would come here first and become a sanctuary. And that really scares me. So I've been afraid of ICE my whole life, even though I'm an immigrant.
Sure. Thank you.
So you're, you're speaking against the designation?
Yes.
Okay.
So that we're not putting them in more danger if martial law ever happens or, because we're, we're, we're a mining town. You can have a national or a natural disaster where martial, where martial law is enacted and political stances will not hold in martial law. Or if any legislation changes, we would be marked as a sanctuary city where ICE would know exactly where to go first for mass deportation.
Thank you. Last call for folks, oh, please.
My name's Alson Thorpe, I live at 315 Chestnut. And you all know I'm in favor of literally the board doing anything. I know that you all have been requested to enact certain policies. But I think that even if you're not willing to enact policies, any statement of support at all will be better than nothing. There is so much fear all around. And I think that especially people who have already been traumatized need signs of love. And I do think that the government is capable of showing love to people who are requesting it. So, um, I'm asking you to do anything and I, I respect what you do as long as you do something.
Thank you. Okay, another last call for comment in the room. Not seeing any, so I see four hands raised online. Where'd that go? Oh. I think Mike also, well, Mike Olson, you were first in line, but so, Mike Olson, you have the floor, if you want to unmute?
Hey, yeah, my name is Mike Olson, I live at 309 West 8th. And I'm here to express my support for sanctuary status in our community. I think there are a lot of misconceptions about what sanctuary status means and the impact it could have on our county. I think that the idea that sanctuary status invites undocumented folks to move to our town is not true. Studies that sanctuary cities do not see an increase in population or violent crime. It's not an open opposition to the federal government. I think it's just about protecting the rights of our current residents and our neighbors who might be unfairly targeted by federal policies that could uproot their lives. It's not about drawing new people or unwanted attention to Leadville. It's about ensuring that our public institutions, like the police and county officials, focus on local concerns rather than proactively cooperating with the federal deportation efforts. It doesn't mean protecting criminals. It means protecting hardworking residents who are simply just trying to live their lives peacefully. It's also important to clarify that sanctuary status is not a legal definition. It doesn't really mean anything. I almost wonder if like we should, we can call it something else entirely or not advertise it. It doesn't require any specific actions besides discouraging unnecessary inquiries into someone's immigration status. It's symbolic and it's to safeguard the dignity and safety of our members of the community. So I am fully in support of sanctuary status to show that Leadville stands with its residents and values the contributions of everyone who calls this place home. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you, Mike. Kelly Sweeney, you're up next.
Thank you so much, Kelly Sweeney, 410 County Road 26, Twin Lakes. And I'm here on item number six, Resolution 2002-4-39 about the water marketing program. And I have concerns about how important this is and the lack of input and transparency for this proposed program being implemented on the eve of the expired terms of the existing Board of County Commissioners. I believe that rather than approval today, it would be considerate and very important for this topic to have a town hall to understand what is included, excluded, and why, so that the citizens of Lake County can understand the program. It appears to be pro-development, which is not bad, but at times it paints with a broad brush so that things like fire suppression ponds needed for existing and new development, which may no longer qualify to be exempt, could not be considered to participate in the program as they may fall under recreational pond filling. The last item that appears to have been added in the list of just a few things that are not allowed to participate. So with that said, I would just encourage you to have a town hall, have an opportunity for people to ask abundant questions and be educated on this before you make a decision that will bind the next county commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Lynette Schwanger, you are next up on the list.
Hi, my name's Lynette Schwanger and I live at 309 West 8th Street. I was present via Zoom at the BOCC meeting when sanctuary status was first presented. I was at the meeting at the Eagles Lodge on the 25th, so I've heard, you know, both sides. And I know many people have expressed fear over the unknown and what might happen if we do pass sanctuary status. But I think it's important to remember the data and, you know, realize those fears of Leadville becoming a target for criminals or experiencing a significant boom in population are unfounded. The data simply just does not support that. And meanwhile, I think our immigrant community does have a reason to be afraid. Like the upcoming federal administration has said they are going to deport millions of people. They are already taking steps to, to make that a reality in the new year. And I think if sanctuary status is what would make our immigrant community feel most safe and able to continue participating in our community in the ways that they always have, then I support that. And I personally am more fearful for our current undocumented community members and more concerned with ensuring their safety than the very low possibility that Leadville might experience an increase in population. And I think our highest priority should be making our current community feel safe and protected. And I'm willing to support them in sanctuary status if that's what they want, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ryan, you are next up.
Yes, thank you so much. My name is Ryan and out of fear of what I'm about to say, I will not comfortably state where I live in the community. But I represent a vast majority of people who are working today that do not support the sanctuary status. I think from all the things that we have heard that are for it, they are well-articulated points. However, when we talk about things like data and case studies, a couple of things come to mind. The first is that data, as we've seen, can be completely subjective. The second thing is while data is helpful, it does always indicate the outcome that we would necessarily see. We can look at things like larger cities such as New York, San Francisco, Chicago, and even Denver who have implemented sanctuary city status, and it has not bode well for the community. Another point around the fear, I think that that is a misconception of what the community is actually feeling. The fear is more so around the concern of us not having a voice. We talk about, you know, signs of love and loving our community, but there is a vast majority of the community that ultimately would be shut out and this love would not be shown to them. I do not believe or think that in any capacity opposing this is being unloving. In fact, it is very caring for our community and people as a whole. And furthermore, as it comes to the way that we go about this, there needs to be more open dialogue because the people in the room, quite candidly, I don't know how you guys take time off of work when a lot of people are working during the day who would like to have a say in this. And respectfully, as a Mexican, I do, I know exactly what it means for people who have actually come here legally and have worked hard to attain citizenship to feel like immigrants or undocumented immigrants can come and ultimately enjoy the same privileges without any encouragement to gain, uh, uh, to gain status to be here legally. With that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Clara Wilson, you're up next.
Hello, Clara Wilson, 909 Diamond Street. I'm here to speak on behalf of, or in support of sanctuary status for Lake County. I think that there is a lot of misunderstanding about what it means to be undocumented in the community and that the way it's discussed and talked about in the community can be pretty harmful to what the reality is and what it means to be undocumented. And I would just like to echo the messaging that there are a lot of people of privilege in this room. And with that privilege comes a responsibility to act, even if it's uncomfortable or scary or a first time, for people of privilege to do something to protect those who don't have the same privileges. And I just encourage you as commissioners to act on that responsibility and to know that not acting because of fear of repercussions or community buy-in is really doing a disservice to the community members that need protected in this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Clara. I just saw one more hand go up, Gloria Perez, you have the floor.
Hi, everyone, I'm Gloria Perez, 45th Palmstock Court. And I'm taking off my Lake County employee hat to make public comment. I'll be in front of them for another item on the agenda later. And I just want to echo what has already been shared in support of declaring Lake County as a sanctuary city. I think that what has been expressed in terms of the misconceptions and misunderstandings or, you know, the things that people want to make others believe about, you know, threats if Lake County becomes a sanctuary city, I think like others have expressed, this is the same community that, you know, has lived in Lake County for a long time. They represent mixed households in many cases. And they have processes in place to, you know, have opportunity to become legal and have a path and the immigration system is just a broken system that like takes a very, very long time. But I would say the, the people that are in this community, that's who we are trying to, you know, to protect. And it's true, you know, they want us to believe that suddenly we would have a high influx of people that are criminals and would just come to our county. We already know that, you know, we, we haven't seen that without declaring Lake County as a sanctuary city and without like, you know, threats of deportation because Leadville just doesn't, you know, have the means to, to support high immigration influx. And we lack a lot of resources. And the reality is the people that come to Leadville, we already know. A lot of people that come to find jobs in the resort areas, in the construction areas. There are really like no other reasons, you know, why immigrant families move to Leadville. And I think we all know that, 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 you know, the people that live in Leadville represent a hardworking community. They represent families, you know, like myself, that came with my parents 30 years ago because my parents had work in the neighboring counties and, you know, made a productive life here. They are our neighbors. If you look around, I think you guys know that these are the people that you go to church with. These are the people that you go to public events with. These are the people that are, you know, in our arts program, in our rec programs. These are the people that we're talking about. We're not talking about, you know, an influx of criminals. Those are people that we interact with on our daily life. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Gloria. And I'm not seeing anyone else who hasn't spoken, but the last call either in the room or online. Okay, thank you, everyone, for the time to come for public comment greatly, appreciate that. I just wanted to quickly come back to, I just wanted to recognize sort of commissioners-elect Alson Thorpe and Matt Bullock in the room. And also I know they along with Angie Lee. I just wanted to thank them for all the work. I just wanted to thank them for all the work they've been doing, even before they joined. Oh, great. They took a huge amount of time to attend Colorado Counties Incorporated Winter Meeting, and they're just doing a lot of work already, getting up to speed. So I just wanted to recognize them and say, you know, personally appreciate all the work they're already doing to prepare for their new roles. So, thank you. And with that, we can move on to Agenda Item Number One. Discussion and consideration of a funding amount up to $12 million as authorized by Resolution 2024-33, a resolution to approve the financing of the certificate of participation for the renovation of the Lake County Government Jail and Courthouse. Tim, you are listed as leading us off on this.
Yep. So to start, I just want to share the news with everyone that Lake County Government has received an A-plus rating from Standard and Poor Global. That's a huge accomplishment and a testament to the support of the board over the past three years of changing our finances, our budgetary process and all of that. This is the first time that Lake County Government has ever received a rating, and an A-plus is an outstanding rating. Our neighbor Chaffey County has done certificates of participations for years, and they are one step above us at a double A-minus. So I just want to take a moment and celebrate that we did an amazing job.
That is great, and thank you to you and staff for all that work. It's excellent.
You're welcome. So I think there's, obviously, we're here for lots of reasons. This has been a two-decade-long conversation in this community about law enforcement facilities, the courtroom, just the courthouse in general, what do we do? I think everyone knows where we're at. But the topic for today is Resolution 2024-33, which was authorized by the board, authorized an amount to borrow up to $10 million for renovations of the Lake County Courthouse. So there are a couple variables, big-picture variables, that the board should consider. We have plateauing sales and lodging revenue, tax revenue. The legislative changes that the state legislature has imposed, I don't know that those are done. We will see future ballot initiatives. Obviously, the federal administrative changes and proposed changes to programs funded and administered locally, like Medicaid, Public Health, RON Bridge, are funded with federal dollars. Those are all proposed in Project 2025 to change. And then, of course, just geopolitical and economic considerations and the impacts on global supply chain, which is what we ran into when we were under the planning phases of the new build for the Community Justice Center that contributed to a lot of the cost allocations. Another consideration that the board does need to consider is that the valuation, the insurance, the insured valuation of the Lake County Courthouse is $8.4 million. I've been working with our insurer to see if we can increase that amount. It's not like your house, you don't get to just pick what the value is that you want your house insured for. So that limits the amount that the board can borrow, since we're using the courthouse as collateral for the certificate of participation. There are some options which we can discuss, which is want to go above that. You know, for the estimates for the six holding cells in the Sallyport are approximately $8 million. In 2022, we had estimates to replace windows at the courthouse. That was, came in at $750,000. Of course, that was two years ago, so probably add on 25% escalation there. We do have various estimates from GHG Architects for H-bag Plumbing, Electrical, ADA Updates, Abatement. So depending on those costs, you know, that like lowest would be a million dollars. Middle of the road is around $6 million, of course, but depending on how we prioritize the project. The current general fund balance, which this board has built up, and Commissioner Much has built up over her two terms, for the purpose of this capital project is a little over $13 million. And the board has approved spending up to $1.2 million on school district property for workforce housing in order to help these school districts stabilize finances. So a general fund balance, if we spend the full $1.2 million on school district property, puts us at 11.8 million in the general fund. Then outlined in the memo, you can see, I put in there for you a $2.5, $3.5, and a $5 million general fund contribution to this project. Then the associated, what the remaining fund reserve would be. So 9.3 million, 8.3 million, and 6.8 million. Looking at the COP options and annual repayment amounts, if the board moved forward with borrowing $10 million, it'd be about $675,000 annual payment for 25 years. 8 million is 540, and 5 million is 337,000 over that 25-year period at a 4.5% interest rate. So if you go, you know, with the highest scenario, gives you a project budget of what we had initially discussed. A middle path gives a project budget of 15 million, and the lowest project budget would be 11 million. Mine and staff's recommendation is to go with the middle path, at least for borrowing. So borrow $8 million, or you could borrow up to the 8.4 million for what the building is insured for. And then determine a general fund contribution amount that the board feels comfortable with. I would suggest a max of $5 million. It still leaves us with a comfortable reserve. And it gets this 25-year-long conversation into actual project mode.
Do you want to just, do you want to pull up that and maybe share it on the screen? Chance, just so everyone, everyone can see it. Any, anyone dying to launch in?
Go ahead.
And a couple, a couple thoughts. One, I want a question is, I, I, I think you mentioned this, but so in order to have a COP, a borrowing amount of more than eight, or that 8.4, we would have to add a building as collateral. So it's like, but that is possible, right? Like, it doesn't...
It is possible to encumber another county property for this.
I mean, obviously, there are risks and...
Yes. And also has the impact on the repayment amount over the year. So all of this, too, just as a reminder for the board, all of this is at current tax rate. So this is at 38.000 mils, and this is at a projection, my projections for next year for sales tax are going to be $5.5 million. So this is just at our current rates. You know, long-range plans, I don't, you know, we can anticipate, we know that there will only be a 5.5% county budget growth cap imposed by the state legislature. There will be, you know, we, we don't know what will happen with the tourism economy. There's, there's no reason to fret that there should be like a precipitous decline, but we don't know that. So just thinking of those other, other long-term considerations for county revenues.
Yeah.
And then, of course, what...
Just the mechanics of encumbering an additional building, additional collateral, is there anything that would delay, you know, the steps we need to take to hit go on the COP to actually implement that? I mean, I just want to, I don't know if that was a quick question, like...
It's more of my time.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm sure, I'm sure it takes some time, but there's not like, oh, we have to go back and get another assessment. There's not another thing that takes like weeks or, you know...
Well, the concern would be is right now we're required to give a title, title commitment on it. And right now, that's only one of this building, which means we have to do one for whatever else was encumbered. And it ended up taking a couple of weeks to do, to get the title commitment we have now for this building. So it would likely delay.
Okay.
And it is, I'm just, the schedule, current schedule is next Wednesday, the 11th. Working with Stifel and Cootock Rock and all of our advisors on this would be the selling of said certificates, if you want, if you want it done this year.
Okay, so some delay, but I, I mean, unless we run into actual title issues, which hopefully we don't on a county-owned building, but...
It did take a lot longer than expected in terms of putting it together.
Of course, there's a lot of questions that they did ask about the state of the building, any environmental factors of the building. Does it have asbestos? Do you know about asbestos? So depending on which facility, potentially, we might have to go back and answer those questions, and I don't know their timeline.
Yeah. Then the other, I mean, more to statement to start the discussion for me is, I mean, I, I still am leaning towards the larger total project budget amount. I just feel like, you know, have to go back like years pre-COVID for any construction project to not hit budget issues. I mean, things are just, like, cost escalation is just wild. You know, you run into things in older buildings during renovation. I, I am just, I'll just say, like, right now, I'm very wary of cutting back the budget on a project of this magnitude and run that risk of having to sort of de-scope midstream or have future commissioners come in and have to find another million or two from somewhere when, you know, we find asbestos or we find some bigger, you know, sewer line problems, you know, whatever it is, like, or, you know, or something comes in 30% more expensive than budgeted, which has just been, that's just sort of how things seem to have gone in the last four or five years with, you know, with, with small and large construction projects. So, I mean, just to kick off the discussion, that's where I'm at, is I, I still, I, I, I hear staff's concerns. I appreciate the financial prudence, but I just don't want to short-change this project from the get-go.
So the T-T, I'm not borrowing $10 million?
Yeah, yeah, or, I mean, I think we talked about an $18 million budget. Maybe I'm just misremembering, but I, I mean, I still lean towards, you know, something in the range of that higher project budget. So yes, you know, borrow...
18.5.
18.5 or, or 18, yeah, you know, or nine and a half, or, you know, what, yeah.
If you borrowed 8 million, we have the 3.5, remember, we have 3.5 million in congressional-directed spending. And you did a $5 million general fund contribution, that's a project budget of 16.5 million. Also, keep in mind, from the 4 million that the board put towards this project, just call it the Justice Center project, in 2021 for the 2022 budget, there's still a little over a million dollars remaining for that for project costs, for architectural fees, owner's rep, all of those kind of things. So even pre, you know, borrowing or pulling the trigger on that, we still have that money, which the board encumbered for that purpose, for this purpose, to go towards all of those costs as well. So I didn't include that million dollars in these figures because the, you know, the plan would be architects.
So 6, 17 plus million...
17.5, yeah. So you're, yeah, so you're, you're pretty close to where you started, and you had set the county up, I think. Now, we've built all of the fiscal tools to invest into this project in the future and to manage, you know, the county's budget with a borrowing amount of, you know, over half a million dollars, but which also will allow future boards to address other deferred maintenance at county facilities, but also other like discretionary funding items for the facilities that we, we do have that were not, that are not obviously part of this project.
So for all intents and purposes, there would actually be 6 million out of our general fund budget? Not across the balance of our general fund balance and the budget?
No, it would, it would be, it would just be that $5 million contribution because we had pulled, we had taken that $4 million out. So the current, that $13 million is the general fund balance. So we put that Community Justice money into a separate fund.
Right, so, but, but it's general, it's still a general fund dollars. It'd be a general fund balance contribution of a five with the general fund to continue allocation. So overall, we would be contributing $6 million.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. I really like that approach, and I think that, that if it, getting us to 17, I agree with you, Jeff, completely on keeping that budget or well within it. And I, I would be supportive of that, that, that 5 million contribution. And if that, if that means that we can borrow, or if 8 million, we can borrow only 8 and get there still, that...
Yeah.
That sounds great to me.
Would be already encumbered amount, yeah, okay.
Mm-hmm.
I think you're beginning to persuade me. On the 8 million...
Plus, then, there's still general fund balance, and if the project has other costs, there could be a further draw from the fund balance. Some ideas, scenario, hmm? What do you think, Jen?
I'm good with the, I figured. So, so kind of what Sarah just said, like, 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 the 8 million COP, but then including that already encumbered amount, yeah, so coming in, but, but stick, try to stick with that, you know, circa 18 million total project budget?
Yeah.
Yeah, because you never know, that's been, yeah.
I, I mean, your point is really important, and as long as that is, I mean, I think that's heard by staff, and we're staying around that 18 million mark. But putting, encumbering us in all the formalities here, I think, the lower those numbers, the more comfortable I am.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Any other questions from staff that we need to wrestle with, or...
Um, no, just, so just, I will let Stifel and Cootock Rock know the board's decision after you take a vote. And then next Wednesday, we don't get to like watch it on the stock exchange floor, but we have a website dedicated to it, so we can watch people buy the COPs.
Wow, that's kind of scary.
Yeah. See it happen.
Is our, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Is our, the resolution, just the first item on the old, in the flat folder for the old information? One, what number is it? I'm sorry. And two, 23? 33, okay.
So just...
But the motion for today is, I understand it would be to give that guidance to staff to move ahead with an $8 million financing amount for the COP and include a $5 million general fund contribution in our 2025 budget for this project.
Correct. And then for next week, when you adopt, Friday the 13th, you will adopt the 2025 budget, that general fund spend down and that will all be included within that.
Yeah.
You don't, do we not, we don't need to pass the resolution today?
Oh, no, you, you're sorry, you've already passed the resolution. I just wanted to show that you, you've, you've authorized this already. Now you're having the discussion, because you authorized up to 10. We've had the discussion, and you will authorize...
My, yeah, all right, I was making sure we didn't have to re, the, replace the resolution with the current numbers.
No, you just, you can determine the amount, and then, yeah, Chris, you, Cootock, Rock, Stifel, that's all the guidance we've received.
Okay.
So you guys just need to choose the, or give, make a vote on borrowing amount and then general fund contribution for this, and that directs us to begin the COP process we're selling, and then ask for preparation for next week's budget adoption.
Okay.
Okay. So I'll look for a motion to give guidance to staff to move forward with the $8 million COP borrowing. And when we finalize the 2025 budget, to include... And, uh, when we finalize the twenty twenty-five budget, to include within that the five million dollar general fund contribution to this project.
Like to amend that a little bit.
Please.
And because I didn't move it, maybe Cindy can keep track, I don't know how formally I have to do that, but I'd like to say that five million general fund balance contribution, just so it's clear. Um, and I'd like to add, with the intention of maintaining. The, uh, as close to the eighteen million dollar overall project budget.
Correct.
So.
Absolutely, yeah.
I'm going to have to restate that altogether.
Why don't you do that just for a second, it's a big deal.
Okay, I'll try, I'll try, I'll try, I know, I just, okay, um, so I'll make a motion to direct staff, uh, to move forward with the eighteen million dollar. Uh, certificate of participation, yeah.
No, eight million.
Sorry, sorry. Let's strike that, let's start over.
Yeah, easy, Tim, easy.
All right, I move to direct staff, uh, to move forward with the eight million dollar certi- certificate of participation limit. Um, including a five million general fund balance contribution to the project, uh, with the intention of. Maintaining an overall project budget close to eight million dollars, or as close to eighteen million dollars as we can.
Okay, second motion, great, any further questions, discussion?
Well, for that discussion, just thank you all so very much, um, this has been, yeah, this, I don't know, I don't really have words, I should really think of words before the next few meetings. It's been a while, so thanks for the process, yeah, thanks for the success.
Congratulations.
Yeah, I'll I'll echo that, I mean, we have worked hard on trying to move forward on paths to catch up on deferred maintenance of the. Buildings and assets that the county owns, so it feels good to to be moving forward on that, so.
Uh, call.
That goes for me.
Calls for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Um, couple more steps still, but we will get there, okay. Uh, sorry, let me just make notes here, so eight, eight million, so. Great, um, agenda item number two, discussion and consideration of resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-six, a resolution establishing the Desiree Fernandez Padilla Scholarship Fund. Uh, Lawrence Snyder, you, let's see here.
Yeah, so just a way of background, uh, you all directed us to the board with drafting this resolution, create a scholarship fund in memory of Desiree. Desiree worked at, uh, DHS, but was a pretty, uh, large part in both DHS and public health operations, she was. Uh, light and, um, very important to our staff, uh, and her family for being here and DHS and public health staff for being here in person and online. Um, and yeah, this is in her memory to help other people pursue post-secondary education in health, human services, social services, so that we might have. More people like Desiree and not less in our community, um, the money would be transferred to the Lake County Community Fund and would be managed by them.
Thank you, yeah, and I'll just say, thank, thank you for being here, sorry, this is the circumstances, but I'm glad we are doing this, so thank you.
Thank you, staff, for presenting this, and, um, it's a very touching and thoughtful, um, uh, effort, and, um, I really. Uh, I really appreciate that, and I think it's really important to to continue to encourage people to, you know, help each other in this community as well. And I'm proud to be a part of this, um, and I hope that we do touch on, touch on the thoughts in community, and thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Look for a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-six, a resolution establishing the Desiree Fernandez Padilla Scholarship.
I'm gonna, I'll make a motion to approve resolution to S twenty twenty-four dash thirty-six, a resolution establishing the Desiree Fernandez Padilla Scholarship Fund. An amount of thirty thousand dollars.
Great, thank you, Hal.
Second.
Great, uh, any final comments or questions?
I think that's enough.
Okay, call for a vote?
Aye. Aye.
Aye, that resolution is approved. Thank you. Uh, agenda item number three, uh, discussion and consideration of the adoption of retail tobacco licensing, uh, ordinance and implementing regulations, uh, Kelsey.
Hi, sorry, I'm a little emotional.
Yeah.
I'm really. Okay, so, um, I want to start by thanking you all for your participation and dedication. In the process that has brought us to this point of being ready to adopt a tobacco, um, retail license ordinance and supporting regulations. This has been a huge project and had great collaboration with the city of Leadville, so we also really appreciate the dedication and time and participation, um, that the city has put in. Um, to making this an effort that will be both in the city of Leadville and in the entire county of Lake County. Um, since the last time I brought this to the board, there have been two minor changes to the ordinance and supporting regulations. Um, the first major change is that we did need to change the city cap, um, since we began this process. There has been an additional retailer within the city of Leadville who has opened up, and then there is one retailer, retailer who is currently in the process of obtaining a state license.
Hmm.
Um, I do believe this further shows the need for this program as we have had to open up in the past three months. Um, so we will need to put the city cap at six, um, public health does have. A goal in the future as some of these businesses close to work on lowering that cap back to our original goal of four, um, but for this to have legal teeth. Um, we had to cap at the number that we were at, since we did not have a desire to impact any existing businesses, um, with this program. The other change is that we have defined what a premium cigar is, um, so that premium cigars can be sold as single sale. Um, those are cigars that are going to be over the price of twelve dollars, um, there's about seven other things that define a premium cigar, I'd be happy to go into it. Um, but we did not want to, the goal of this was not to stop folks from buying a celebratory cigar that is probably outside of the price point of. The group we are trying to prohibit from accessing tobacco products, um, so are there any questions about those major changes?
No, those make sense.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I just say, I mean, thanks for all the previous work sessions, like working us through and other discussions, so, that's great.
Great, so unless anyone has any further questions, I would request adoption of the tobacco retail licensing ordinance and regulation.
Sorry, I lost my information.
Do we need to state more than is in the title on the agenda? Okay.
Are we, um, actually adopting the ordinance, or are we posting this for, uh, final adoption, do you have the same process as?
This is your phone, it has been published.
Did we put?
And then we will, I will be submitting, if this is approved, the final version to the Herald.
For publication as having been adopted.
After this meeting.
Okay.
Okay, uh, so I'll look for a motion to adopt, uh, the retail tobacco licensing ordinance and implementing regulations.
Well, okay, I'll make a motion to approve the adoption of the retail tobacco licensing ordinance and implementing regulations, right.
Yeah. Uh, a second, do you have an ordinance number, or is that in the, I think I'm not pulling up the right.
It's not.
Is there any?
No, it's not in a serial like you would make your escalations.
Okay.
Okay, so just the title is good, okay, so I think we have a good.
Okay. Great.
Motion and second on the table.
Nothing further for me.
Look for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, great, that is, uh, adopted.
Thank you all.
Great.
That is huge.
Yeah.
Um, that will hopefully make this next item very.
Yes. Yes, so please, go ahead on item number four.
Great, so the next item is an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Leadville and, um, Lake County Public Health and Lake County Government. That gives us, um, the authority to administer and manage this program within the city of Leadville is, as well as Lake County. Um, to have a uniform program, um, and then we will also collect all licensing fees and, and adjournments.
The one comment I would make is unfortunately I have not received the final comments back from the city attorney yet on this, so my request, if you're inclined to. To approve this IGA would be to put a pending filing review.
Okay. That makes sense.
Um, I'll move to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Leadville and Lake County regarding, um, tobacco licensing, pending final legal review.
Second motion, great, any final comments or?
Nothing from me.
Spring, uh, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, great, that IGA with the city is approved pending final legal review of any city comments. Okay, nice, thank you, yeah.
Thank you, I do have one more thing that is not at all related to tobacco, so that will knock that out real quick, and then I will be done.
Agenda item number five, discussion and consideration of the adoption of resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-eight, a resolution updating fees for temporary or special events with food.
Yes. Well, so Lake County has had a temporary, um, events policy and procedure since about twenty sixteen, it has not been revised or updated since its initial. Um, inception, so Alana, who is our, um, health inspector, took the time to look at other counties' policies and fees and. Um, crosswalk ours with those and make all of the edits that we have now, um, this policy is a lot more straightforward, it defines. Everything within the policy, um, we had been wanting to make sure that Lake County nonprofits can have temporary. Food events without paying us fees, our goal is not to cut into any of their fundraising while also making sure that they're having safe food events. Um, so this policy calls that out very specifically, um, and then it additionally adds a structure for late fees for vendors and coordinators. Um, temporary fee fees in this program are pretty time consuming, um, and when folks don't pay, it then takes us a lot of time to capture those fees, so this. Formalizes a late fee structure, um, and then we had previously not had any additional fees for vendors that are temporarily licensed in other counties. And this adds a fifty dollar fee for them to use that temporary license in Lake County, which is aligned with what just about everyone else in the state of Colorado is doing. Um, so that's a quick rundown of what this resolution is, do you all have any questions?
Does this encompass, um, like food trucks and trailers, or?
So food trucks and trailers do occasionally come into this policy, but those are licensed for year-round operation. So when they come to temporary events, we check their license, but they do not have to pay any additional fees, because they're already paying for a year-round license in the state of Colorado, and within that. They have the ability to move between counties, so we do review them to make sure that they're in good standing and have, you know, safe processes when they come to our events, but they do not have to pay additional fees.
How will this affect some of the events that happen in our community?
It will help us collect fees more appropriately for large events like boom days that take a lot of our staff's time and consideration and could have a very high impact if.
How will it change?
Um, contaminated or unsafe food is being sold, and then it otherwise just formalizes what we have already been doing, which is not charging Lake County nonprofits for events, and we wanted to protect that formally.
How about the, is there, uh, are there any other significant changes in the requirements, the regulations, no?
No, and we also did, um, have legal go over the current forms that we use for folks to fill out, so just making sure that we have their stamp of approval on those, so. It really just formalizes the process without, it shouldn't really impact, um, anyone who's already doing this well.
Would the supply to, like vendors at the, when the, um, when the farm has their annual event?
Um, it really depends on the type of food service, um, some vendors don't qualify as a temporary vendor, because like if you're selling whole produce, we don't regulate that, there's.
What if you're selling green chili or home for baked bread and things like that?
Yeah, and a lot of those things are protected under the Cottage Foods Act, which is defined in this policy and is not regulated under our, um, umbrella.
The, on the brochure, it says food can be cooked or stored at home, is that, does that mean they, like, the storage of frozen. Items or like breads or something like that, that's going to be brought to an event for like hot dogs or something being cooked at the event?
That is a reflection of what like the state law is, um, it's in the Colorado Food Code.
Uh-huh. Okay.
So, any licensed temporary or, um, fully licensed retail food establishment, um, should not have any food storage at home.
Okay, okay.
Um, those folks operating under the Cottage Foods Act are not subject to that, all, all of their food is being prepared and stored at home, and it's, um.
Right. With, under, yeah, under regulations, yep, yep.
Under that, yes. So, yeah, that's something that we did not create that is in the Colorado Food Code.
Okay. Okay, excuse me.
Is there any other questions?
Me, um. And look for a motion, uh, to approve resolution number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-eight, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Lake County, Colorado. Adopting policies and procedures for the licensing of temporary or special events involving food. And that is the title that I see on the resolution packet, just slightly different than the agenda item, so I think we're in good shape.
Um, so move, is that good?
Any second, great. Um, do you know for the funds, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, great, uh, twenty twenty-four dash thirty-eight is approved, thanks for working that through.
Thanks a lot very much.
Okay. Uh, agenda item number six, discussion and consideration of the adoption of resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-nine, a resolution adopting the water marketing program policy. Bryce?
All right, thank you, board, um, yeah, just to give a little background for everyone, you know, this is, this policy, we've been working on it for a long time, but it's the culmination of. Basically a quarter century of work that the county has undertaken and embarked upon, so, starting in the late nineteen nineties when we acquired some water rights. Went to court for almost twenty years to get the ability to use those water rights in a beneficial way, and that court case was passed in, in about an early twenty seventeen, and so. This water marketing policy is really the nuts and bolts and operational component of the water enterprise that was passed by resolution twenty seventeen oh two. Um, so we've been working on the policies and everything and how we would actually administer that water since twenty seventeen. But starting with the formation of the water resources, uh, staff position in earlier twenty twenty-four. Uh, we started really playing an end game on how to get this policy constructed and passed, um, but also. Being sure to leverage Commissioner Mucha's, you know, knowledge and water rights and the network and the water industry that she's established over the last eight years as commissioner. We had several work sessions starting in the summer, you know, some of which the, were attended by members of the public. Um, but we, we kind of hammered out all these issues to get your guys' feedback on what we wanted to see in the final implementation.
To, to what extent has the public had opportunities to weigh in on this?
Besides the work sessions?
Uh, yeah.
You know, I've had several discussions with members of the public, but we haven't had a formal town hall, and I think that's something that was maybe desired, but at this point, I still plan on having a town hall to present this policy. Um, to members of the public, but I think, given how nuanced this issue was and how limited our portfolio was, and that's what I'll get into, is kind of where the. The origin of the structure and the limits and the uses we've allowed in the, in the enterprise came from, right, and that was. Basically in recognition of how limited our water portfolio is, we have a lot of demand, we have very little, um, water available for our needs, right, and our uses. And so, we had to find a way, and that's what we worked through with the work sessions, was what's the most efficient and equitable use of our limited water portfolio?
These are publicly advertised work sessions?
On our plan, I guess, as we do.
Correct, I believe all work sessions are publicly advertised.
Yeah, um, also in the past, the Water Advisory Council had worked for many years to discuss this, um, and in fact, kind of. On the contrary of, or. It was, it, they were interesting conversations, I felt rushing the process to, uh, administer or create leases between folks, and so. Um, um, there, there've been input over the years of many types to either slow this down or speed it up or, um, whatnot, and I think Bryce is absolutely right with the work sessions that we had, and this being. Our limited portfolio, which, um, in and of itself, uh, wouldn't even cover, uh, kind of the, the applications that are being requested. Um, with the volume of water that we have, uh, and when we look at, if, when we will look at the fire, uh, pond. Uh, and when we look at, if, when we will look at the fire uh pond allocations and uh that legislation, it's gonna be a whole nother ball of wax to, to figure out how that even integrates with our portfolio, if it does.
Yeah, that's a really good point. I think the fire suppression pond issue has maybe been conflated with this issue, but legally in the state of Colorado, they are two separate bodies of law. The fire suppression pond is kind of a newer thing that exists essentially outside of existing water rights administration in Colorado and case law. And so, you know, it's, it's a law that we need to consider and there's a lot of beneficial use that can come from it. But I also think it's, because it's separate from the water rights, we, we can't conflate it. We don't want to incorporate it into the water marketing policy.
And, and can I, I, two, two, I was looking over um notes from our work sessions and wanted to make sure I had this right. I mean, two, two, two things that give me sort of, sort of uh comfort in moving ahead with this and not waiting for more town halls or more, more pub, public sessions. One is, my understanding is like the governance structure of this enterprise, i- it's being set up in a way that it is relatively easy to change policies. Like we don't have to go through a whole, like compared to like if it was all written in ordinance or, you know, a more complicated governance process. Point, point being in my mind is that if we find from public input or experience that something needs tweaking or, or, or a larger change, that, that, that's not a very cumbersome process to course correct. And then just a second thing, just to get it out before, um, is, I mean, I think we very consciously had a phased availability of the water units, you know, so that we didn't have everything subscribed in a rush, you know, with the initial rules again, that we giving ourselves time to learn through experience, you know, with, with, with this new, new enterprise. So I guess the question in there is, did I recall that accurately?
Yeah, I think that's exactly, we want to set it up, we're setting it up in a limited way to be conservative because we kind of have uncertain demand, we have uncertain um operational configurations and logistics that are gonna come in. But it's been set up in a conservative way that, you know, the water marketing policy and the bylaws of the operation are essentially one document. The board of county commissioners sits as the board of the enterprise and meets at least quarterly. And so there, the board can amend this document based on demands from the public. And that's, that's kind of what my goal was, was to set up a basic framework that can then be expanded as we know and as we're secure in providing that water. Uh, the, this water marketing policy in the enterprise is focused on contracted water, which means that we're contracting and obligating ourselves to provide that water in perpetuity. This doesn't preclude the county from leasing water on a more temporary basis for any use allowed in our court decree, including recreational ponds and evaporative lots and things like that. What we're doing is we're protecting and being more conservative on the contracting where we're actually permanently obligating ourselves to provide that water. So that, there, there are two, there is contract and leasing. The leasing still has a lot of nuance and a lot of leeway for the board to kind of um put our water to where they see fit at that time.
And the barn or the fire pond issue um could very well be completely separate from any augmentation and, and it has exemptions, right? And, and waivers to the need of being augmented with existing ponds and, and whatever that process, I haven't dug into it line by line at the state is, doesn't rely on um uh necessarily an augmentation.
Exactly, or like a sort of a supply of water rights.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, the fire suppression pond law, like I said, it's relatively new, but it does have a set of criteria that's separate from, but it does go to Division of Water Resources for final vetting to see if that pond is eligible for inclusion or not. Um, so there is still a process, you know, we, we may designate our desire for that to be a fire suppression pond, but it, the final authority to designate it is at the state level still after review. But again, like I said, it's just, it's a, it's an interesting subject in the water world right now because it's separate from water rights. It's, it's almost on top of water rights, so it's a tricky one. But that's why we rely on the, the state water resources professionals to kind of give us that thorough analysis. But there, the other thing I just wanted to touch on is that this water marketing policy also establishes the pricing structure of the enterprise and what we're going to charge for augmentation units. Um, this is an enterprise that's set up to be revenue neutral, right? It's set up to make its own way, but also kind of collect more revenues than it needs so that it can invest in capital expenditures, water infrastructure, expansion, and hopefully acquisition of new water rights so that the county can expand its water portfolio so that we can comfortably entertain expanded uses in the future. Uh, so that those pricey, those prices were kind of based on a lot of discussions between myself, the board, other professionals, community planning and development. And then, I'm, I hope it was included in your packet, but we did get a um kind of a memo from our engineers about that pricing structure, just showing that it's in line with water rights prices in the basin in general, right? So we're not subsidizing development, but we're also not um overcharging or, or being punitive in any way towards this new water use.
Bryce, can you speak a little bit to the question I had for you the other day regarding um a question about a um a very A D U accessory dwelling unit charge?
Yeah, sure.
I had a question that was brought up to me um pointing to Parkville's change or variation of fees um for regular tap and an A D U.
Definitely.
If I could bring you some to that.
Yes, I think we discussed a lot in our work sessions that A D U's are a desired outcome of this policy. They're designed, they increase housing stock, usually for a more workforce-based person. Um, and so we're allowing A D U's in this policy. However, that A D U is at the same price for an augmentation unit as um a unit that would be a augmentation unit used for any other price. We have one set price for all of units. Whereas Parkville Water District, they have a smaller or lesser fee for an A D U add-on. But Parkville Water District is just a whole other entity, right? They have the ability, you know, they might charge that A D U a lower price rate at the end of the day because they know that A D U might use less water. But then, what I want to emphasize is that our A D U, they have to buy one augmentation unit, which requires just as much administration as any other augmentation unit we use for any other purpose. And so while it's, it's not like incentivizing A D U's, it's not recruiting them or not, you know, putting further burden on A D U's. And it's just in recognition that it's, for us, it's administratively the same. It's a, takes the same amount of water out of our portfolio, takes the same amount of resources to provide. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. Um, I would just say there are a couple really um not in, well, they're not like consequential to the, the, the meat of the documents, but there's just some little, like where your, where your sections go over to other pages. There's little things that you can clean up, but those are really only things I noticed in the document. Um, and like that seven hundred in section, I don't know, where it has the domestic and commercial uh annual supply pricing, like the seven hundred dollars is attached to the next word. Really, like, yeah, tiny things to look at and clean up, but not substantial to the um to the issue.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Aye.
Concerns?
I don't, I'm good.
All right. Um, I'll move to approve the resolution of the Board of County Comis-, uh, sorry, let's start over there. Resolution. Is it thirty nine?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll move to approve resolution thirty nine, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Lake County, Colorado, adopting water marketing program policy.
Second motion.
Excellent.
Okay. Thank you. See you know if other questions or comments?
I just wanted to thank Bryce and thank everyone for, uh, yeah, the, the, the work in the, thus far over my tenure, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for helping me get it done. Uh, you know, I was finished, like, it took several months and it's pretty nuanced, right? We all would know that, but um I think it's gonna be a super awesome service benefit for the county.
Yeah. Well, yeah, and I got, yeah, sorry, I, I think we've been enough work sessions on this now, but we may take it for granted. But I mean, yeah, thank you. And, and this is a, this is a real asset that the county has and we should manage it to its best, you know, benefit for the community, you know, I mean, including financial benefit. Um, and as you was alluding to, it, you know, it's having the structure then sets us up for, you know, um, having a better handle on managing other, other water assets, additional water assets in the future. So it, I mean, it's, this is a big deal um to manage our assets well.
And to that point, if I could add too, I mean, again, we have, this is the one element of other relationships and agreements that we have in storage and other needs that we will, that will arise in our own um storage possibilities. So there are many other um levers to pull in terms of investing uh into the long-term uh benefit of this. This, there, this is a long game, really, um, in, in many ways. And I don't know if, I, I, I will, yes.
Okay. Call for vote, yes?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Uh, twenty twenty four thirty nine on the water marketing program policy uh is adopted.
Thank you.
Um, and I think maybe, and there wasn't, there was like a couple very, I mean, non-substantive, non-material like typos, but, yeah, so just note that for the record, um, but nothing substantive or material in terms of changes. Uh, okay. Agenda item number seven, discussion and consideration of the adoption of resolution twenty twenty four dash forty, uh, a resolution establishing fees for the issuance, transfer, renewal, and other related services of retail marijuana and cultivation licenses. Liz?
Good morning. So on October thirty first, I received the marijuana cultivation tier one license renewal for Gem Dutch acres. Um, and that started me kind of looking for what we had as policy and practice to really guide us in that renewal. I was unable to find any sort of guiding document that we do have at the county. So I followed the model that we created for liquor licensing as well as for tobacco licensing, working in partnership with the county attorney's office as well as the Department of Revenue. I found out what we really needed to do to kind of cement this practice. So working with Sarah this morning, I was able to clean up a little bit to make sure that expressly expressed exactly what we were looking for. We only have one establishment in Lake County that is the exception to the on um county.
Prohibition, yeah.
Prohibition uh for establishments in the unincorporated county. So I did specify that specifically in this resolution, but it references our state statutes, our local ordinance, as well as additional resolutions of how we got to this moment. So I am recommending that we do a thousand dollar license renewal. It is parallels with the city of Leadville is doing for renewals and it also parallels with other counties and cities that I looked at across the state.
Thank you, Liz. I appreciate your response. And, uh, yeah, I was, I, I think it's very important to remove all of those elements so as not to alarm the community. We were considering something different, so, thank you.
Great. Well, yeah, and thank you, Sarah, for catching that and having the institutional knowledge on, on that. Um, I don't have any further questions, so, um, not so many. Uh, you can look for, look for a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash forty. I was just gonna pull up the, just make sure we have, do you have, do you have the title?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll move to uh adopt resolution twenty four dash forty, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Lake, establishing fees for the renewal of existing marijuana cultivation, of the existing marijuana cultivation license.
Second motion. Great. Any final comments or?
No.
Discussion, great. Uh, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Uh, resolution twenty twenty four dash forty
Sorry.
um, is approved. Uh, and again, thank you staff for catching that uh and working through all the issues. Uh, agenda item number eight, discussion and consideration of approval of a purchase order with discount sell for mobile routers.
So I am super excited about this. Um, we have really struggled at the landfill to get them consistent and reliable internet. When we went through the Vero upgrade project, that was a location that they could not provide service to. And so currently, uh, well, excuse me, for the past couple of months, we were shooting a beam from the airport to the landfill through the magic of technology to give them the connection. And you can imagine through that distance, that led to some inconsistencies. So our Verizon rep led us to this product called CradlePoint, which is essentially a wireless router that uses a SIM card and pulse cell phone signal to boost and amplify a really powerful hotspot. We have been piloting that at the landfill for a little bit over a month. Robin is very happy. She gave me the thumbs up. She's like, this is working great. So because we have such positive feedback at that location, I'm very interested in getting two of them. And that will provide us with a mobile option and solution if we ever have Wi-Fi down at a location or lose connectivity like much of the county did yesterday. It won't be impacted by a line being cut. Granted, a cell phone goes down, that will cause an issue, but we can use this as a redundant tool. So we're gonna use it as a permit, hopefully, at the landfill to give them that connection. And then having that second one just really provides us the option for, when we're having a bad day, we can bring it someplace to have a reliable and sustainable internet.
I don't have any questions or comments on that.
I don't have any questions either. Um, I'll move to approve the purchase order um with, sorry.
Discount sell.
Discount sell, uh, the amount of three thousand five hundred ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents um for redundancy at the landfill and as a mobile option.
Second motion. Uh, call for vote?
Nothing further for me. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Uh, that purchase order for discount sell for mobile routers is approved. All right. Uh, agenda item number nine, discussion and consideration of a budget allocation for twenty twenty five for the Leadville Lake County Animal Shelter. Um, I can take a, a crack at introducing this. And again, this, the, the outcome for this discussion is just uh guidance, discussion amongst ourselves and, and, and guidance. But, um, you know, we do, we had indicated previously in communication to the, to the city um that we would uh put a hundred and sixty thousand dollars into our twenty twenty five budget. But I do think we need to have some further discussion and guidance to staff here um in terms of what that budget allocation is based on and what our plan is. Um, uh, so just to recall, in March of this year, the B O C C did indicate in a letter to the city um that, uh, you know, that, that, that was a formal notice of intent to terminate the current I G A of the joint management of the shelter. Uh, that would happen January one, or, you know, that letter indicated January one. So I think we just need, we do need to give guidance to staff. And again, instead of have discussion amongst ourselves about what is our um uh thinking on acting on that letter of intent. Uh, I mean, we, we just need to make, you know, we, we will need to make a decision before January one and communicate that clearly to the city about what our intent there is. So, um, again, recognizing that, you know, this is not the, the day or the agenda item to make that decision. I think we do need to give guidance to staff on a couple things. So I would, like, in, in, in my mind, I think if we are going to um exercise that termination, you know, in twenty twenty five, there are just some logistical steps that we need to ask staff to think through and bring us details on. Uh, I'm probably missing some things, but I think sort of in general, guidance to staff, you know, request to staff to bring us, you know, an assessment of those logistical steps. But I think for sure, we probably need to give guidance to staff to prepare some job descriptions. Um, and, and to include in the twenty twenty five budget, you know, funding for those positions, um, you know, so that we have, you know, if, if, if the county is going to take over operation or, or, well, to terminate the I G A and operate an, an animal shelter, we need to have staff, so we need to have job descriptions to hire that staff. Um, I think other, you know, there's just probably like a bunch of other logistics in terms of taking over that county, you know, taking over the operations, the day-to-day operations of that building. I mean, just like little things like I mean, just like little things like whose name is the, are the utilities in, and what is it, who has the key to the door? Um, you know, just, um, I think request staff to think through all those things. And I think particularly then come back with an assessment of can we do that on January one? You know, do we just, again, logistically to ensure smooth and safe, uh, transition? Is there a different date that staff would recommend? Um, you know, if we were to exercise that termination? I'd also add, you know, we've been having, I mean, the, the sheriff's office has an animal control officer and would be very much involved. And I think the, the current thinking is, is that if we did terminate, the shelter operations would sit under the sheriff's office. So we just need to keep making sure the sheriff's office is also involved in those discussions. And, you know, that, that we all just have a completely nailed-down understanding of the logistical steps, you know, between the sheriff's office, ourselves, um, you know, probably public works and maintenance, you know, and, and the city. And then, you know, closing with that is, I think we just need to, um, have, you know, a, a, as we get that information on what the logistical steps are, you know, we need to be having a discussion with the city, um, you know, city council on how that transition can work most smoothly. Again, I think in my mind, is it, is it January one is not logistically possible? You know, how do we, you know, can, can, can we get, you know, the, the, the city included in its budget, budget allocation? You know, can we get a sort of, I don't know if interim I G A is the right word, maybe something even less formal, but some commitment from the city to either continue operations up until a date that is logistically possible to shift operation? You know, talk through with city council how, um, you know, invoicing or financial contributions to the county. You know, if we take things over would work, I mean, just, you know, just need to be having some discussions with city council on, um, on how that transition would work. So that was a large mouthful of things, um, but I think in my mind is to kick it off with some concrete things. I think, um, we need to, uh, have, yeah, give, give, give guidance to staff, request that information from staff on exactly how exercising that terminate, that March twenty twenty-four termination intent would work. Full stop. Uh, any further questions or thoughts from fellow commissioners?
Um, just can you remind me, as far as the timeline goes through the end of the year, what is your thought on when those, that, the conversation happens with, um, the city?
Well, I mean, I, I think some of it depends on the response from staff on whether, you know, is January one just completely not logistically possible or, you know, a, a, a good, safe?
Okay.
You know, uh, handoff. So I think if it, you know, if, if we do think we can make January one work, I mean, it's, you know, pretty, I, 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 I think that's, then yes, it's probably gonna be no, then I think, once we have a proposed date, and I think we need to have a proposed date to really take to the city, to have concrete discussions. So.
Is there a reason we can't propose a termination? Well, I guess have these discussions and the termination date isn't January one, or is that?
Yeah, sorry, I guess that's what I was saying is like, you know, i- i- is there, and Chris, you can hop in in one second, but, um,
Yeah, I know, that's okay.
You know, i- is, you know, January one is what we said in the letter. You know, I think if we have a clear sense of what's, you know, logistically and operationally, you know, a good idea, we can, we can then propose a day, you know, other than January one and do it in a more, you know, controlled manner.
Yeah.
Chris?
And that's, that's what I was gonna say, I'm sorry that, that Sheriff Speckman is not available today to help with this, but I know in conversations, um, with him and other, other staff and such, the thought would be that the termination of the existing I G A would be effective the first, but that we would come to an agreement with the city for a transition negotiation of a new I G A in the first quarter.
Yeah.
And so that could provide the time period for the communications that are needed for the transition, the sheriff's office to, to make sure that they're prepared to bring it under the office as well.
The, the, the question I have is, is like, for sure, you know, negotiate a new I G A, you know, by, by the first quarter or whenever, but I, I just wonder, you know, if we, if the termination date is January one, then what is happening in the first quarter? And that's what I want to like nail down procedurally, you know, and, and it does seem, I guess that's where my brain was going to exercise in the termination at a date where we would have county staff ready and able to take over operations. But I, but again, I don't know what the right sort of legal word or process for that is.
We could certainly engage with the city on a simple amendment to the I G A to extend it for the first quarter with the intent, on the basis that the intent is to negotiate a new I G A during that time. And that way it kind of keeps things status quo as we develop the process, the transition process for it.
Could that interim extension, wouldn't that interim extension just run through whatever date we feel like we would have staff in place to take over?
Yeah.
Um, and then, and then, and then there would be, uh, a gap of a clear understanding between that, let's just just say that date is February fifteenth. You know, there would be a gap between that date when county staff take over operation and when a full new I G A could be, um, negotiated. I just, I think it'd be good, I, I mean, the county could just take the, you know, the hit, that would be great. Financially, if city council would agree to be invoiced, you know, even though we don't have a full I G A.
Yeah.
So I don't know if you have thoughts or?
Well, that's what I was gonna say, I think the only way that that, that perhaps makes that simple is if we, if we can come to an agreement with the city to essentially extend the term of the I G A.
Yeah.
For a defined period while we negotiate the new I G A. And during that period, it would just continue the obligation to, to, for each party to make their budgeted contributions towards the operations during that transition period. I mean, that, from the legal, from the document standpoint, that would be the simplest approach. But then I think in terms of, uh, we're not ready to make a, an offer of a certain estimate when the county might be ready to do that, essentially, the, the potential vision would be essentially flipping the relationship as it is right now. It's where instead of the city operating and the county pretty much just providing its budgeted allocation for those operations in reverse, but also offering more of an opportunity for both parties to have input on those operations and the budgeting and that kind of stuff going forward.
Yeah.
Went to the, well, again, just a couple variables, right, for the board, if everyone understands rights. It's been a three-year-long conversation and it's finally come to a head. Um, we did send the letter, uh, notice to terminate, um, um, prior to April first of this year. Here we are at the end of this year, um, and there hasn't seemed to been like a lot of partnership or moving forward on really addressing the issue. I think of just, you know, the city adopted their budget this week. It did have, you know, a hundred and sixty K contribution that the board had suggested would be appropriate based on twenty twenty-four actuals to the animal shelter in there. But I, I guess I just really wanna, like, perhaps broaden the discussion for the board of like, really, what are the goals? For this, um, I think, you know, there, you know, obviously, the budgetary piece has been the marching orders for, for the past three years, and not being included deliberately by the city in those budget discussions, um, has led to this. So I guess what is, I mean, the goal going forward and then for, for Q one? So at least we have a roadmap, uh, to work for, for next year. Which also, you know, the map in the room, um, the elephant in the room, right? There's, we're gonna have a new, a new board on that, so I guess, you know, guidance from this board to the new board, reasons for frustrations and why we're at where we're at, um, and then, you know, proposed goals and solutions going forward.
Yeah, I, to, to, to think that first, I did wanna say, I mean, while things have not moved as fast as they could have or was desired, I mean, Mayor, uh, Dana Green has, you know, engaged, I mean, we've had good conversations. I think, you know, we had a work session as the B O C C with some elements we'd like to see in a new, um, a new I G A. So at least as one commissioner, I mean, I think there's still the clear intent to have a county-wide that includes the city, you know, one animal shelter, you know, in the county that is well-managed and serves all city residents, you know, and, 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 I'm sorry, all county, uh, residents. So, um, you know, I, I, um, I, I, there have been good faith efforts, I mean, had the joint work session. It's just gone slower than, and, and here we are needing to make a decision on what to do with that, with that, and to terminate. And I, um, Tim, to your question, again, as one commissioner, I mean, for me, that's the intent. The intent is to have a well-run shelter that first and foremost supports the needs of animal control and public safety. Um, and, uh, and, um, and, you know, that, that could as well run. And as you said, there's been years of frustration from the county side about, uh, having input on the, uh, on the budget as well as, you know, operational and management decision-making. The I G A is old, everyone recognizes it's outdated, the, the, the current I G A, and it just, it just does not give the county any standing to, um, have that input on the budget and the management. And, um, here we are, uh, wishing to change that. And Tim is, again, from my perspective as one commissioner, you know, the intent is basically to take the good faith discussions that have happened to date on the new I G A between the city and county, and basically just flip the city and county in there, you know? So it will be administered by the county, but jointly funded and overseen, you know, very similar to how we do the fire department, and we've made great strides on, uh, you know, um, beefing that up. So again, the, the, the intent is not to take our ball and go home. The intent is to continue a shared joint shelter, but administered by the, by the county and under the auspices of, you know, the elements of that new I G A. So that's where we wanna get to. And, um, you know, the question is just sort of, given that it's early December, how do we do that logistically in the least painful way? And, and, and also, you know, just being very, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to put current animal shelter staff through any more of a wringer than this, this must be stressful for them. I don't wanna put them through a, any more of a wringer than this already will be. I don't wanna put animals in danger, I don't wanna put sheriff's deputies or city police officers in danger or the public in danger because we don't have a functioning shelter for some period of time. So really, the goal is just to have the smoothest, well-planned, um, way to get from here to there.
You're talking just transition plan?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Right, I mean, there's some, some things you can start right away, like job descriptions and things like that, and, you know, get the wheels rolling on that now. And as far as the I G A is concerned, I mean, the, the history of, of our negotiating I G A with the city are, are grim. But it, it should be simple because it's just flipping who's doing what, right? I mean, it's the same, basically the same structure, it's just changing the names of who does and who.
Yeah, yeah.
And I mean, the sheriff is, in my conversations with him, he seems to be ready to take this on.
Yeah. I, I think there is though, that legal question of, do we, do we extend the current I G A until the new I, the new full I G A is negotiated? So do we extend the city administration, you know, the, the, a full quarter? Or does the county want to try to take over operations on some sort of interim basis before the full new I G A is final? I would agree with that, that, that we do want to take it over sooner rather than later. Which, 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 I mean, I kind of lean towards that way too, but it does just mean that we need to think through, you know, are, is the county willing to do that with no I G, with no interim I G A in place? With an informal understanding with city council members, with something actually on paper? You know, so I think that's, you know, the, yeah, there's just a decision to be made there and potentially some risk that the county would take on, like, like if we move forward, and, and I agree with you, I think let's just move as fast as we can and not delay it. I G As have had a habit of taking longer than we think, so we could say first quarter, but things could slip. So, I mean, as one commissioner, I'm interested in taking it over administratively as soon as we can. But then I think the question is, that we'll need to determine before the end of the year, is are we willing to take some county sort of financial risk basically of running, running it solo until the new I G A is in place?
And again, I'm sorry that the sheriff's not here. In terms of being able to give an indication of, and I, I agree, my conversations with him have been equal to Commissioner Edwards, that he feels ready to, to do so, take it on. But I also understand what you're saying, so I think just for transition purposes, there should be some sort of, even if it's a letter agreement between the city and the county that says, this is what we plan to do, and maybe make a proposal as to how we envision it in terms of, we kind of keep in terms of the budget aspects.
Yeah.
Being the same during the transition period until the new I G As.
Yeah.
Like, like an interim operating group?
Yeah, or just a, a, a fiscal agreement.
Yeah. Right, like, just whatever, I mean, this is, or not the right math, but you know, if it's ten or twelve K a month, just a commitment to, you know, be invoiced for that, you know, and during the interim period.
Right.
Um, yeah, and also on the sheriff, I mean, I did mention, I think absolutely the sheriff needs to be fully involved. I think he, he and the sheriff's office has been involved, like, with the meeting with the city before Thanksgiving, you know, so. And again, this is a guidance discussion, not a decision, so, uh, in no, in no way whatsoever trying to, uh, not have the sheriff's office involved here.
Yeah, and I know, it's just this public statement.
Um, yeah, yeah.
But then we can certainly tee that up in terms of recommending, you know, the fiscal arrangement that currently exists, continuing for the first quarter while the, the new I T As in place. And that might also provide some incentive for both sides to be timely in their consideration negotiation of that I G A.
Yeah, um, and I think, again, from my understanding, it's like, just the, the, the deadline that is out there is like, we probably need to have a clear communication to the city, you know, and, and obviously with the sheriff, you know, but, um, before the end of the calendar year.
I think staff can work towards that for you.
All right.
Um, I guess I just wonder what, what the depths of the conversation, what the conversations with the sheriff's office and like creating that, I mean, essentially we're creating a new department or adding this under the sheriff's office, and there's been, uh, confidence and conversations had all around that this is, that this is, we're, we're preparing for this?
I, yeah, and, and, yeah, and here's where, it would have been good to have made sure to remind the sheriff, but I mean, I think from the conversations we've had and, you know, the, there's a meeting with the city for Thanksgiving, I think. I, I wouldn't say it's a new department, I think it's, you know, the animal control staff person exists in the sheriff's office. So I think this would just make that a, a unit, not one person. You know, it would be a unit or program under the sheriff's office. With, you know, the certified animal control officer there, and then I would imagine like a shelter manager position and, you know, one or more staff people, you know, in, in the shelter, you know, with, with as many people as, as needed to provide the open hours that were, you know, there was here.
Yeah, and those, I mean, those, I assume that might change somewhat with the, uh, uh, different intention of, uh.
Yeah. Yeah.
What is run there, I suppose.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and, and over time, that would be a joint discussion with the city and county about what, you know, what the ability and willingness of the annual budget is, you know, what the types of services are. of the annual budget is, you know, what the types of services are. Um, but I would imagine, well.
Yeah, my conversations with him has given me, seems to have given us, you know, quite a bit of thought.
Yeah.
It has, you know, plans and goals for the operation.
Yeah, and yeah, and 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 recalling our our work session from before and and conversations with the sheriff directly, you know, the the, uh, uh, an element we had coming out of that work session was is that we see the the primary mission, core mission of an animal shelter is to support animal control and that you shouldn't have law enforcement, animal control staff under the shelter to do the other way around. That the shelter first and foremost supports the animal control officer. So, again, I don't know the seniority of that actual person, whether they're the right person to manage it or there would be, you know, someone else in the sheriff's office who would would maybe have some managerial role. I think those are some of the details.
Yeah, I mean, you're talking about two two different, separate and distinct, you know, aspects of the operation. You're talking about animal control was primarily a law enforcement function, and then you're talking about the the care, the the care of the animals in the shelter. Those are two separate and distinct things. So you're you're gonna have your your shelter management and the shelter staff that will deal with the animals there and animals that are brought in and things like that. And then and then your, the the animal patrol part is more under the law enforcement umbrella.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, um, related but still two separate and distinct.
Yeah. It's not just what Commissioner Much was talking about, that it would be a unit with different, one side would be animal control and one side would be the operations, but they would be under that one unit.
Yeah, and and I guess that's still a discussion to be had is whether those civilian shelter staff should or need to be, I mean, are they in the sheriff's office and under the sheriff's office's budget? Are they, you know, somewhere else in the county? I I think that's a, that that's.
That's an administrative question.
Yeah.
You know, and that's a question for the sheriff. I mean, does he have the the, does he seems to have the desire and willingness to manage to to oversee the management of the shelter as well as the, you know, his his A C O.
Yeah.
So. I don't, I don't think, I mean, just personally, I would typically need to create a whole nother, you know, administrative unit for the animal shelter. That's just my, that's just my take on it. Because previously at the city, the 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 animal shelter fell under the auspices of the police corps.
Yeah.
Hmm.
And, I mean, yeah, so, I mean, I would propose, at least for the purposes of getting a job description written, which needs to have a hiring manager, um, that would for now be in the sheriff's office. But we, I mean, have that with a question mark at the end of that sentence for for the sheriff and staff.
Okay, yeah, I'm I'm not, I'm not quite clear on like the termination date and and that because I, I'm sorry, I, uh, we don't, I just, I guess it's just a shame that we couldn't come to a mutual agreement between the city and the county
Yeah.
on revising our I G A. Um, because I don't know, I mean, I mean, it makes all sense in the world if things were otherwise working well to trigger the termination perhaps with a later date in the quarter, the first quarter of next year. So we are mutually contributing to the operations still. But I don't have any, I don't have any reason to believe that we complete a new agreement with the city. Um, and then I'm nervous that if we have the staff in there now with this on the horizon, we don't know what's gonna happen in there, really.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I I agree, I think that's an open question, you know? And, yeah, I mean, it it is a shame, you know, I think a lot of progress has been made. Like, we have some elements of an I G A on paper that have been mutually discussed. So it's not like nothing has happened at all, you know? Um, but, you know, like, these things take time, especially when there's management and budget, you know, considerations. So I think that's why I'm, it it feels like it would be smoother to just wait until the end of the first quarter. I just am not, uh, have a high degree of confidence that things won't languish if we take that route.
Hmm.
Um, so. I mean, I lean a little bit more towards just doing it as soon as we can have staff, county staff lined up and dealing with the uncertainty of an interim period with a lighter user. Really just, like, I mean, Chris said it most clearly, like, just a sort of financial contribution agreement. Um.
I'd love to understand, I I mean, I don't really understand the numbers going in and out of the shelter as far as like what it are just animals from the community or animals at large or other. Um, so I, I mean, I, because it's not, I mean, I don't think we should take for granted the level of work that it would take to still house and feed and clean and operate that if people walk out of the animal shelter, right? Um, even in a two-week period or a three-week period, I suppose, what can we take animals to some county or?
Well, that's, yeah, I mean, that's something that possibly could happen, but, um, I, you know, that's why it made council in favor of providing the first quarter for that so that you are able to post positions, have the existing employees of the animal shelter apply to the extent they they wish to apply for the positions that would be available at the animal shelter. And that way you have some continuity of experience and and so forth as it transitions to the county.
Yeah, and, well, and just to say it more clearly, in my, in my mind, the the idea of having job descriptions and posting them and not rushing in on January one is so that e- existing staff, I mean, I ideally, we could just transfer staff from the city to the county, but we can't do that. We have to post positions, you know? So, um, you know, I think just giving us some logistical time for the hiring process to to, um, to give current staff the opportunity to move over to the county and 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 go through a proper hiring process. And and to your, I mean, to your concern about like, I mean, yeah, I don't think any of us really know the exact right number of staff and the number of animals and like the level of service, but I think we're, we we are going to learn that.
Well, the sheriff, in my conversations with him, has some s- staffing ideas.
Yeah.
Since he's given us some thought, we've looked at some information, and he's he's not here, so I'm not gonna speak for him, but he has, uh, given us consideration in hand, and he has some numbers in his head that he thinks are would be appropriate.
Yeah, and and also, I mean, one other thought, again, just, I mean, since, you know, there's obviously community interest and concern on this, but also, I mean, you know, I think we put forward a proposed good faith budget allocation, the city did, that, you know, like, more more or less, it's 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 last year's actuals, you know, or budget.
Budget.
Bu- budget is, sorry. Um, but, you know, it's it, the the between the city and county, the money that is looking to be available to run the shelter in twenty twenty five is is the same as or not materially different than it has been. So this isn't, uh, there's no big cut in funding on the horizon. So, I think we're setting ourselves up to be ready to provide a a good and similar level of service to the community.
Okay.
It's really, it's really just an administrative shift.
To make it clear, there's no cut in the budget.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um.
So from today to which, are we making more formal decision on the termination?
I think that would be good to look at.
On the special meeting?
I mean, I think we have to make a decision and communicate to the city before, you know, in this month, like before the end of the calendar year. And then, um, I was just gonna pull up our calendar of existing meetings.
That's why I'm not even know if you wanted to tee it up to where I'm pretty confident with is that we can give it to sheriff and then come back with additional information on this this direction you've given us for the meeting on the seventeenth. But part of it too is wanting to engage with the city in communications as to, you know, the direction that we've been given as well. So to see, you know, what their thoughts are on how we can accomplish that transition in as painless of an manner as possible.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I think definitely put, yeah, so definitely putting it on our seventeen agenda, makes a ton of sense. And then I think we can figure out, I mean, as staff learns more between now and then, we can figure out what the right cadence of communicating, you know, informally with the city is.
Do you have more answers before that, the seventeenth?
Right.
And some plan that hopefully is a combined effort and agree upon?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Okay, and again, this is just for guidance, I don't think there's any vote or motion or anything. Just staff can take this swirly discussion and be prepared for sure with some options. I I mean, again, I think maybe to say, I mean, I think for the seventeen, there would be, I would imagine one option of waiting until the full I G A is developed. Um, you know, with that kind of longer extension, and then another option of what it would look like to shift administration sooner, um, and be in some interim period before the full new I G A is negotiated. So I would expect seeing, yeah, having a discussion of those, those two pathways.
Okay.
Okay, good?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Um, agenda number ten, the discussion of twenty twenty five county department capital requests. I think this was just, um, put on the agenda. Um, you know, we we obviously have our special meeting, uh, we have meetings next week to keep wrapping up the budget, but just an opportunity for commissioners to ask further questions or for us to give staff guidance on some of the remaining undecided capital requests. I think we have made a lot of headway in considering like the supplemental requests and other, uh, decisions. But I think there was, in 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 my recollection, and please correct me, you know, commissioners and staff, I think there was, we had not reached a, um, tentative number for economic development activities. Um, and then we still, and then there was some security cam, there's a supplemental for security cameras, and there's a supplemental for de-ice at the airport. Um, and then maybe in a separate category is nonprofit contributions. Um, I, but I think those were the ones that we had still some questions or discussion on.
There's one, I have a question about the pool at the skate park.
Oh, yeah.
An alternative to to re-tiling.
Yeah, just before we just slap a number in.
Right, is there some, something different that doesn't have to be replaced so frequently?
Yeah, do we, do we want, I had in my head that, sorry, I don't have everything pulled up in front of me. I had in my head, there was like twenty-five K, there was a number.
Was it more than that?
Was it more than that? Um, um. Yeah, I mean, it's it is a guidance.
Yeah, did we get any more information from the rock department?
Yeah.
On alternatives?
Okay.
Yeah, so in your packet and the document that says capital requests, you can go through. Sorry, um, yes, in terms of the, um, re-tiling for the skate park for the pool, um, this was based on what we would do through, um, I can't remember, uh, what's it, what's the one through public works that we did for the contract for? Um, it's a few things now.
Oh, I know we're talking about, it's not really.
Sourcewell, um, so this would be for approved vendors that we already have. Um, so, um, in twenty twenty, the tiling was, uh, replaced with Rampage L L C for twenty-five thousand one hundred dollars. Um, staff were aware that the county claimed in September twenty twenty that the repair work was deficient. However, it's unclear whether that deficient work was ever rectified by the contractor. We believe that it wasn't, um, that the warranty for the initial work has expired. Um, so there are, um, other options for that that we've discussed in the past. We can, you know, concrete over it, um, knock out the tile, ground it down, um, you know, just so it's not, um, a hazard to anyone, just so it's, you know, not that that piece is there. Um, so there are other, you know, vendors, um, that through Sourcewell that we can, you know, that are, uh, part of those approved bidders, um, you know, that specialize in this. So there are different options for this. Um, this is just, you know, one of the options based on previous actuals from twenty twenty.
So I guess, I guess the the question is to get something in the budget is whether we're comfortable putting in, you know, an amount in the budget with directions to staff to, you know, I mean, obviously, it would come back to us before approving a contract for that work.
Right, we don't have to.
But 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 that would avoid them having to come back with a mid-year supplemental.
Um, you know, like I said, there are the other options, right? It's an option for the repair for it, for the tiling replacement, or there are the other options. Um, you know, concreting, taking it out.
What? I'm trying to read this. Um, I just don't know what we, yeah, we don't know what the level of funding looks like for that.
I think the, I'm reading the form, like, the the twenty twenty five request was for thirty.
Right.
Which, I mean, I I I mean.
I think that's the way, I was gonna say, I think that's a lot.
Maybe that was my concern. Is this gonna keep being a recurring thing every couple of years?
Well, the the twenty.
You know, and is there some more permanent way we can fix it?
Five, right, I don't think we should do the tiling. I think it, I think it seems, it's gotta be something like, you can fill it with, um, leather concrete perhaps. Um, but maybe it just wouldn't operate the same way since it wasn't, isn't a continuous pour or something. Um, sure, so we don't have specifics on that, Tim?
We have the actuals from twenty twenty, and then this is the estimated what it would be for doing the full repair.
Well, that, the twenty twenty was a full, like, the whole park, it wasn't just the the pool.
I was, I believe that it was just the pool tiling, redoing all of the pool tiling.
No, it was, the twenty twenty was at a complete park repair on other, like, the other.
Uh, like some drainage.
Cravings, some drainage, some cracked ceilings, some other repairs. So I don't know what, um, um.
Okay, let's talk about another one, we'll get Karen here.
Okay.
And, uh, can you go there, Karen, please?
Um, are there added?
Karen, are you? Okay.
Um. So on the cameras, I got more information from Michael and I understand that like the whole bid was not what he had requested, and he seemed to be totally fine with getting what he actually needed. Um, and not, I I don't know that the intention was to replace the entire, oh, Michael's wrong, the entire, um, system. Um, because in my head, I was thinking, okay, that comparable cost of the de-icing and the camera system. Um, so I had asked a couple of questions about that. Um, so in my mind, I would say we put off the camera systems, um, and look at the de-icing and then request that, um, Josh pay us back, pay the general fund back from the airport, um, fund for that cost, but I'd I'd be in favor of, um, moving forward with that equipment for de-icing.
Yeah, I mean, that makes sense to to need a scale back on the camera dollar allocation to get. Yeah, I mean, that makes sense to to need a scale back on the camera dollar allocation to get the de-icing of the finished line.
Um, I don't know if we have, I uh, I don't know if Josh is on just yet, but.
Um.
Most of your personnel.
Yeah.
Just here.
Most of your money for de-icing, so?
I mean, that's. So can you?
Have time that is ready?
I'm talking to you.
Um, Josh, how much was the de, the de-icing was a hundred and?
One forty-five, I was in here.
Okay. Okay. And then how, what's like, we were talking about a payback to the general fund from the airport.
Um, I mean, we can set that up, how you guys see fit, so, um, I mean, we can set it up based on
What would it?
like the return on what we charged for that and, you know, and then build it off of that cost.
Okay.
So.
Do we wanna set like a number of year, what, do you have any idea of what?
Oh.
What number of years would be?
I mean, I could probably pay that off in less than five.
Okay.
What's the demand for this?
Uh, it's usually, we usually get about ten to fifteen calls a winter for it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the problem is, is a lot of times it's the same company, and now I think they've called us many times and we just don't have it, so they don't ask as much anymore, um.
Do you have to reach out and let them know that you have these services?
Yeah, I would probably put out some type of marketing ad that said that we now have de-iced at the airport, so that, and I, I would almost guarantee that we would have a lot more calls. Um, because we offer that service now and those jets can, even if we don't spray that much de-ice, uh, the fact that we have it lets them come in and know that they're not going to get stuck in Ludville, which is huge, um, so the de-icer itself will generate revenue, because de-icing costs quite a bit to spray, um.
What does it cost?
Oh, a small jet can be anywhere from fifteen hundred dollars plus, first, like de-ice application all the way up to some five thousand, six thousand dollars for larger business jets.
Okay.
Um, and then that'll generate revenue, plus the, uh, the bigger part will be that we'll likely sell more fuel. Uh, and that'll increase our fuel sales, which will be another huge revenue generator, so.
Yeah, okay, so five years max on like a payback to the general fund, and then there was some element of uh, environmental concerns with the spraying, which we did not seem to hit a threshold on, but.
I could, it's, I've asked many, and they, no one ever gave me like a firm number, but they said that, I talked to the state, because we were talking about plans for building a de-ice collection facility to collect that fluid, um, and I was told that, oh, I I won't even be close like it within the realm of needing to collect the ice, um, fluid, so, there's that piece, uh, also our environment up here, like I've told before that um, glycol and stuff like that break down and you de-erase really quickly, and most people are aware of our sun intensity up here, so um, it wouldn't be an issue until we started to increase volume.
Okay, and then, uh, what would a facility like that actually look like?
Uh, it would just be a paved area that would be graded in a way, then have a drain at one end, and pretty much like a septic tank, but just a, a collection point um, that that would then get pumped.
Okay.
So you would have to build out this infrastructure?
Yes. Uh, we, we did a cost estimate for that, it was.
If they get to that threshold, okay.
Yes, so we did a cost estimate for that project, uh, just recently, um, last month, and it was north of, I believe it was about six or seven hundred thousand dollars.
She wouldn't need to do that.
No, we're, Aspen has commercial service and they have to spray and they collect theirs in tanks. Um, and get theirs pumped twice a week, but they also, they have three hundred aircraft operations a day, uh, three hundred to three hundred fifty aircraft operations per day, so we're, um, zero to fifteen is what our normal days look like, so, I don't think we'll be.
How many?
Zero to fifteen.
And they have what?
Three hundred to three hundred fifty a day.
Oh.
And commercial service, so we're, we won't cross that threshold for quite a while.
Okay. I mean, I'd be in favor of that pending, you know, that you get some, something formal, I guess, or some, something in place that gives us that, uh, uh, reliance that we wouldn't, wouldn't have to cross that threshold to invest that, and I suppose would, would something, an investment like that come with a four-year um, C dot A R N article or the grant, or the grant cycle, that could be a project?
Yeah, that would be. We put that on our, um, our C I P, our capital improvement plan that we do with the state and feds, um, so, because that is an eligible uh, grant-funded application, so that, it, it could be eligible for, um, federal F A A money in the future for that type of facility, so.
Yeah, okay.
It wouldn't come at our cost.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. And I did, I just wanna make a, no, I mean, this is just a discussion for guidance, so we have a less painful final budget meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So we're not like voting on, on these and locking them in, but yeah, just trying to give ten minutes there.
Well, I think, yeah, yeah, formal, yeah, formal guidance.
Quick, quick. Quicker guidance, yeah.
I can, um, I'll, I'll get, um, pricing updates for buying type one and type four de-ice, uh, any, and and de-ice. And, uh, look around and shop around for what application costs are for nearby airports and everything, and I'll tell you guys, uh, like what we can look at for revenue, um.
Okay.
And then maybe that we can have a better picture of what that payback looks like.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Um. So, well, we're waiting for Karen to come in, and, uh, economic development pieces, I guess, is the last big one, but then are there others, Tim, that were not answered? I thought those were the three as well?
Um, we did have one, uh, additional one, we were trying to find funding for a new microfiche scanner
I was still like, yeah.
for the library, it would be five thousand dollars.
It's not nine thousand dollars?
The total is, but if we can use part of this year's budget to order.
Okay, so it said it's at the end of life, are we not, have we not elect, put all of that information, like, sorry, recorded it all electronically already? Is that part of?
Um, really, yeah, since the inception of Ludville, no, we have not.
Okay.
Um, so there's quite a bit of local history and information that is on microfiche.
Um, sure, yes, I just didn't, I didn't, I never really understood what, um, I know we had a gentleman who has a lot of experience helping do some, um, work, so it looks really, uh, excited, so.
I'm excited about digitalizing our types, um, so I'll speak over half a breaded, but yeah, they're working on digitizing for the local public history collection, and so that lets you take a dated format and convert it, and so they're using it for glass size as well as additional formats, um, that no longer exist in the twenty-first century. But this is for posterity and preservation of our cultural history, and it's just, it's really cool.
No, I, I.
If you're into that.
All right, so the request, okay, I saw the nine thousand twenty-five, uh, number, but the request is just for about five thousand.
That's the total, yeah, yeah, that's the total.
Okay.
Yeah, um, yeah.
Um, I would be okay with that.
Yeah, that's, I mean, jo- joking aside, yeah, I mean, we need to get that into a modern format, so that is not a large amount of money, so get that done.
Okay. Okay.
I have, I have a question for, for Jane, um, about this yurt at the, at the golf course, um, why aren't, why couldn't we use the existing clubhouse for this purpose? It's not ours.
Doesn't that belong to the county?
Doesn't belong, it belongs to the board out there?
Belongs to, not my squawk.
Yeah.
Hmm.
There's also things that we haven't quite worked through on winter activities and the water use, because currently the well is, the rural fourteen plan is, um, through the golf season. Doesn't too cover the winter season.
Okay. And how much is, how much is the concrete foundation for the yurt gonna cost?
Just the materials, probably around twenty grand.
What about labor?
If we can do it ourselves, public work is, is able to prioritize that next year, then we don't have a cost for that. Uh, but if we have to contract it out, generally speaking, if you budget the same cost for the material, so.
So you're looking at forty grand?
Say. Probably about forty grand to, for the foundation, get it all set, and they'll be here, if we were to contract the whole thing. Which is partly why we've made the decision on to store it at the airport for the winter, so we can make a stronger plan moving into next year.
True.
There's some permitting pieces too that we really need to sort out when it comes to the water and the infrastructure, do we need a plan for septic? There's some pieces that we have to work with and department on, and the year it's already purchased.
It's in here.
Uh, the year has already been purchased, we all have proof that purchased this test program.
And what's the service life of the yurt?
The question I'm actually. As long as no bears get to it, yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, this is, how, how, how did the, and then this is just, I guess, a sort of a question, but how did the, the the cross-country ski, the Ludville Lake County Cross-Country Ski Council, how did they obtain the use of the clubhouse?
They had a lease, at least a golf course or.
In the year too? Is that what they did, at a lease?
Yep, there was a.
There's no, there's no running water because the wild permit doesn't allow for that, and, um.
Or there may have been, but we discovered in like that whole conversation that
Yeah, for the past two years when we did it, yeah, they didn't do it, stays the port bodies and all that, so.
we weren't actually covered. Okay.
They had, uh, the deep rock things out there.
Mm.
For native concessions and all that.
Okay.
Is the foundation, is that, was that an addition, or was that on your original list, the foundation for the year?
It's been on the first row.
Okay.
Well, yeah, I just, um, we, uh, went in for one of those cog mini-grants and received the five thousand dollars to offset that cost. So I'm just so sorry, it is an addition.
The foundation is the addition.
It's an additional capital request, does it?
Okay, okay.
Is the yurt gonna be?
Spurned by, spurned by the mini cog, the cog mini-grant.
Not initially, it's gonna end up being a phased project, so initially it's gonna be used as a primitive site. But we do need to set up plans for it to eventually.
Yeah.
Being, maybe electrical, maybe internet, there's a lot of options out there, but we do have to work through those with the initial plans that in the phased approach for setup for success down there.
Um, I think the, uh, last outstanding, unless Michael wanted to chime in on the cameras, the members on, well, Karen's here, sorry, thanks.
Yeah.
No, you're fine, sorry, I wasn't, I had it on, but I was.
It's all good.
Not listening, obviously.
We are curious, um, what other information you may have gotten us on what alternative
Yes.
solutions there were for just the pool piece, and nor if you think that the entire, because my recollection on the twenty twenty, um, not replacement, but that, that work that was done, was the entire skate park with the cracks and some of those things, um, they did the pool.
That project, yeah. They did the pool, um, I don't know if it was the entire skate park, they definitely repaired, um, some cracked surfaces and a lot of the grounding.
Yeah.
Which is the same, I mean, that stuff, there are cracked surfaces again, like it's not just the tile work.
Okay.
It is, yeah, there is gra, I mean, it is, it is the, that is a big portion of it.
This is not just the tile work. Right.
But we also do have that grounding that needs to be done again, and there are some cracked surfaces, ti, I don't know exactly what those are called, pieces of concrete that could be repaired again.
Yeah.
It's kind of that same issue, I think the main work was in the bowl, and those are the main places that are.
Well, and, uh, what's the, Ed Coping?
Coping.
Coping, okay, on the edge, those, those were also repaired throughout the park, right?
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Yeah, well, I don't know about throughout the whole park, I thought the bowl was the main scope of work.
I mean.
That doesn't necessarily matter.
And then they did.
Sorry.
No, and then they did little repairs to other things, but, yeah.
But this is the whole po, whole park for coping and all of that, or this quote is just the pool?
This quote is from the tile work and the pool, and then any extra grounding and things that need to be done.
In the pool?
So. In the pool, and well, it's the pool and the top surface of the pool.
Yeah, yeah. What's the situation with the tennis courts?
Um.
We declined that request because of the location and the half a million dollar cost.
Mm-hmm.
So with guidance to come back and think about where tennis courts and the ball courts might fit, you know?
Right. Yes, and then.
Be a bit of a more comprehensive thinking of that, right?
Yeah, yeah, and then I've had other conversations with Duncan on next steps for that project.
Okay. So back to the skate park, I mean, I think, I, I don't know if you heard, I mean, I think our interest is just like, we just don't wanna keep paying to like try to redo the little pile, so in a bit, yeah, so
A thousand percent.
I think guidance is just to like, let's try to find a way to do that.
The best solution to not do this every four years, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And it might take every four years for like some of those other maintenance pieces.
Right.
But this one was a pretty big one that degraded pretty quickly after the one we did.
That's amazing. Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Because I think the last company we used assured us that the tiling was gonna work, like, it was like, oh, yeah, we can guarantee you, we'll put the tiling back in, it'll sit in place, and obviously that didn't work, so, yeah, whether it's, you know, replacing the tiling or getting some sort of new, whether it's concrete or like however, we can make it safe for users.
Yeah. Yeah. Like cutting out the whole lip and just doing, yeah, some, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Alright, um, I mean, I'm inclined just, I mean, I, I, I think this needs to be done, especially if it includes some of the other, you know, crack ceiling and, you know,
Mm-hmm.
routing, I mean, I'm inclined to put in a budget allocation, but with that guidance to like, yeah, really, like, like, yeah, let's not just redo the tiling once, we're to come back with
Right.
what seems like a more durable plan.
Yeah.
And it is like a very highly utilized area for a variety of age groups, I mean, you see adults out there to
Yeah. Yeah.
moms with their little kids, you know, it's, it's really popular area, so.
Yeah, well, it needs, I think it need, it definitely needs to be fixed, I think, I'd just like to see it fixed in a more permanent durable way, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
While recognizing the need that it is a heavily, heavily used asset, it's, yeah, you know, so should we, I mean, I feel like we're leaning, uh, let's put in that as a sort of placeholder amount
Yeah.
that needs to get done, but with that, with, with the sense that it's, you know, it'll come back with a clearer.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and maybe a more comprehensive across the, the entire park, if that's possible, to do the coping and whatnot.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, and get all those other little things completed, I think that's a better number if it's, uh, includes all of that.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I'm okay with that then. Commissioner Roberts, okay, all right, thanks.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Um.
Economic development?
Economic development.
I mean, I, I mean, I'll, I mean, I'm in favor of that larger amount, and, and I know, you know, we have a tight budget and we're, that, that may have some knock-on effects that we have to talk about, but I just think that, I mean, we've just talked about economic development being an important thing we need to work on in this community, in this community, and not development for its own sake, but like economic diversification, you know, and, you know, we had, you know, I don't need to rehash some discussions with the E D C, but, you know, I think, you know, in, 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 in a way, I see this larger amount kind of re- replacing what had been years of allocation to the E D C, um, so, I, I, I think, you know, that amount that's in there or something close to it is something we just need to have in, in the budget.
Mm-hmm. Agree.
Um, and, I don't, yeah. You feel like it, there's not enough clarity on, on this one?
Uh, clarity for me, sorry, three hundred sixty K for consultants, project managers, um, you know,
Yeah.
uh, data collection, so, I mean, I, while recognizing the need for those things, it, it three hundred sixty K is, to me, is, that's a lot. Um, I'm also concerned about the, the economy, the, the natural economy going forward and how, how that could, how that could potentially affect us. And I know that's a dissenting opinion, but it's, it's, I'm feeling on that, it's a lot of money.
No, that's not. Yeah, um, I guess one, yeah.
When we, we, the, the community is, expressed angst about study after study after study and and all this stuff, you know, and, um, yeah, that's just my position on it.
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, one, one thing on, I, I mean, I, I hear you on, like, I don't want study after study, so I've been, maybe that's like my own editorializing on your good concerns, is like, my, my sense is this incremental is to actually have capacity to move forward beyond studying in one or two, you know, lanes of. Lanes of potential economic development.
How many roads can we fix with three hundred sixty thousand?
Yeah.
How how, yeah, how many, uh, you know, how much wildfire mitigation can we do with with three hundred sixty thousand dollars? Um.
Yeah.
Those, those are my concerns.
I think, uh, I mean, I think I'd be totally fine to lower that to a three hundred thousand dollar limit, but I think part of that was perhaps not only. Um, or or part of the original was maybe an an additional staff person, which could be a consultant instead of hiring on additional staff. Um, I do think that there's gonna be opportunities for, um, with the lodging study that we did do, um, maybe to offering some incentives. Um, in that realm, I think working with partners like Leadville Sanitation or other um infrastructure pieces that have a great deal to do with. Our economic development abilities, um, are also some opportunities that I would love to give, um. The department, the the flexibility to um utilize. Um, and and I I I mean, I think, you know, maybe we, um. I have faith that that wouldn't be utilized and burned through just to use it. Um, and so if there's some way that we have that, that, those checks and balances, um. Either with uh. The director and manager or between board, um, and keep those conversations going and where that.
Yeah.
Like fund or that line item is being used and where it tends to be used.
Yeah. Well, so so maybe the next step, I mean, I think, you know, to your point about like better understanding. What is in here, I also realized, I I had a question that I hadn't relayed is like, I'm not hundred percent sure. Whether this supplemental is on top of the already budgeted, you know, like tourism and economic development amount, so maybe.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, okay, so. So that does become a lot, so maybe, I mean, maybe we need to come back to this with with Adam in the room.
I think Adam's on to.
Yep, I'm here.
Well, I mean, I mean, we 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 have all those work session times next week. I wonder, I mean, just looking at time and our remaining agenda items here.
I think, yeah, and one thing I I just wanna point out is that I I think you're all um very spot on that nothing would be. Um, spent uh with a sense of haste and I also um fully acknowledge that the comprehensive planning. Uh efforts that we're going to do next year will inform um a lot of sort of the best path forward and the sort of. That is going to set the vision, that will then take tactics, that will then lever, you know, lean on tactics to be able to um. Get work done, so I think that at at the end of the day, what what we're looking at here and what we're talking about is. You either have the resources available to uh be able to. Move on tactics or you don't, so you know, when it comes to things like, um. Capacity building for Leadville Sanitation, uh, to really be able to go after large national grants. Um, and uh. Work the way out of the fourteen plus million dollar hole that they're staring at right now, um, I. We can't actually focus on development, especially new development, if we're not fixing the infrastructure problems that are imminent, so. Um, again, uh, I I have always anticipated that this is not. Studies uh for study sake work, this is that being able to add capacity to special districts, being able to. Um, yeah, I mean, there is so much discussion that needs to happen around the U R A, um, and uh. Sort of the direction of um some of the areas that are actually developable in our community and those. That's all work that cannot be done by one human, um, so uh not taking on sort of the fringe. Uh. Cost of uh another full-time employee is sort of the thing we discussed at the last, uh, last time we met on this, and so. Being able to work with a contractor, um, I recently received some really amazing resumes from downtown Colorado Inc. of folks who. Do economic development on a contract basis and um that, those would be the kind of folks that I'd be interested in engaging. On a project basis, on at an hourly rate or project rate, but um. Uh, I think that, to be perfectly honest, I'm not hundred percent certain, um. I could very easily come up with ballpark numbers and do a work session on what that would look like, but at this point, I think it's it's a lot more of. Allocating funds so that we have a path forward, um, with something that is um new to Lake County government.
Adam, would a three hundred thousand dollar number, would that be uh? I mean, would you be, would that, compared to the three hundred sixty proposed? Um, how, what would that mean for uh your intentions?
Sure, i- in terms of. So, and and I think we probably should, um. Our total here.
Yeah.
Cause again, we we have that that sort of hundred and forty and that again is for um staff and that is for things like Placer AI, the data tool that we already have. Um, and um essentially just contingency, um, but then, you know, so in addition to that. It, we could be either talking about um an additional allocation of three hundred, or we could be talking about a three hundred total or a three hundred and sixty total. Um, I I think that um the in addition to three hundred versus three sixty, that would definitely, that that would, either one would. Would not have a large impact on sort of, um. The goals that we're focused on, um, but if if we did go from, you know, essentially, um. If we were talking three hundred total, then, you know, it would just, I'm happy to sort of work through what that would look like, um, in terms of. Overall, like how quickly that money would evaporate. Based on, again, what we're talking about with off airport. Um, and uh helping special districts, um, and. Working through some of the pieces uh with in incentives, right, I mean, if you're. Yeah, if we're talking about basically like a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, you're not gonna really be able to build much of an incentive package. Around that, but I'm happy to.
I had like that. I I I was assuming that it was on top of the baseline budget that you have in place, Adams, as.
Yeah.
Funds to use for those purposes, um, so I propose a three hundred thousand dollar addition.
Yeah, I'm 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 good with that amount and I mean, yeah, we're realizing something. Used, but let's, you know, give staff guidance to move forward with that into next week's budgeting.
Okay.
Yeah, totally appreciate and respect the the conversation as well, so.
Thanks for being online, Adam.
Yeah.
Yep, thank you very much.
Um, okay, and then is the yurt the uh? Outstanding item then, the foundation?
Yeah.
That we didn't discuss?
I mean, I feel, I mean, we have the yurt, I feel like we should move forward with the foundation.
Mm-hmm.
Install it.
Yeah, I mean, uh, we have it, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
So.
I agree. Alright. Is that, is that the exhaust list there?
Yep.
Okay.
Did we decide on it, does cameras uh?
I I think, I thought the guidance, or I understood the guidance to be sort of to come back with a revised and lower. Uh, you you have a more carefully scoped thing like for Michael, that it wasn't, that we didn't want.
Is he still online?
I don't know if Michael's still on, I took the guidance as now, wait, tell the courthouse budget moves forward.
Um.
I think that was also, yeah, that might also be.
Okay. I I'm. I'm fine with that too, I mean, I guess, I I feel like if if there, if we do have a known gap in where some cameras could. Be used, I mean, if there's some money, like, I mean, we've been using like trail cams or like others that are inter-solutions, if. I don't, I don't wanna totally zero it out if there's a useful smaller amount to fix like. Some known problems areas before going to like the more comprehensive. So.
Michael, do you have options to trim down the scope of the security cameras?
Yeah, dude, the biggest problem was is that the, um. The proposal was they said, basically, they quoted it like two years ago and just sent it back, that's why the pool cameras are still on there. There was some sheriff's cameras on there that I don't think that are required because they're already been replaced by the sheriff's office. And I mean, now there's some new ones in the clerk's office also. Um, so there's a lot of it that needs to come out of it once, when they sent the final product to me. And I have to sit down and go through it with the guy to find out exactly where he was planning on putting stuff and and. Where it needed to be. I know there's some stuff at the landfill that the sheriff wanted, like, um, cameras on the impound lot. More in our yard so they can see what goes on with their vehicles parked in our yard, if anything happens to them.
Yeah.
Some of that kind of stuff, but the guy didn't specifically say that was, this is that quote or anything, he just put it all in. Basically a quote and then put names where they went. So I wasn't impressed with it.
Michael, do you think it's possible to get a revised, you know, de-scoped or like more itemized quote back? In order for us to see that for next week's discussion?
Or maybe, have you had a chance to look at the actual quote, if I remember correctly, it's broken down into like departments and sections of. Where like Michael was saying, like where the cameras would go, it's fairly detailed, I'm not sure, like you said, I'm not sure how old it is, but.
It is. Right, that's what I was.
But yeah, it is, it is broken down into different sections and then each section has like a price or whatever, so.
Yeah, I I can do that, I can go through it and look at that, um. But like I said, we don't need cameras in the pool anymore because we don't have, the pool's not operational.
Right.
And that's where they put it for recreation.
Is it, is it critical? Is it critical for some of those wreck areas or are you, I mean, do you want to continue to move forward and? Does this look like a supplemental request in Q one next year, if if it's necessary?
Yeah, I mean, some of the cameras are probably pretty necessary, like at the ice rink and stuff, um, we've got a lot of that noise and stuff going on on down there. Some of them, you know, like at other facilities. Um, I think that community park and stuff, I know we've had some problems again at the um drop sites. Um, for recycling drop sites. Um, like the other day, somebody took a whole truckload of um stuff and put it in the trash dumpster out there. Not in yellow bags. But we came through it because we didn't have a camera out there. And um game cameras weren't working that well.
Okay.
But I can, I can go through it and I can get information back to you and maybe just do another supplemental budget request for what we need.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you could update the current list, the current quote, Michael, and then. Uh, perhaps, then we can talk through it uh next Tuesday at the work session.
Yeah. Great.
I'll be there.
Let's have a spot.
Yeah.
Well, we have the, we can highlight like.
Pulling it out?
I think the ones, you know, that are desired by staff and then the the locations, right, that you guys um know.
And at least that's a ballpark figure if that.
Yeah.
Um, date dating is up, obviously.
And that's where I'm at, I'd rather put in like a ballpark figure with direction, you know, rather than zero it out, but, you know, but. Oh, and that we should do something until you get it done.
Yeah.
Okay.
Quote expired on the third, but yeah, we can.
Okay.
Yeah. Um. Okay. So. Um, I did not budget enough of my own time for this whole agenda, I have a very hard stop at one.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, um.
If we could get, um.
Yeah, so, no, but, well, so so I think a lot of these are PSAs, the things we've already discussed.
Yes.
So maybe the ha, the de-discretion discussion, no?
No, it number twelve needs to be the full board, please.
Okay.
So if you wanna skip or you wanna do eleven real quick, then we can get to the arc preserve.
Okay. Uh, sure.
If that's all right. Unless you have the last feedback on the de-discretion, so.
I think that will. And we're gonna punt the de-discretion, right, we're gonna have the discussion and move it to the meeting on, it's not, seven?
Okay.
Okay, yeah, so yeah, so just be a discussion.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, they're great, then, yeah, let's quickly do the MOU with CS, CSU, so agenda item number eleven.
Sure, so the new CSU Extension Director starts next week, um, we've worked on this, because kind of throughout the, um, this past year. Um, previously with Colorado State University, we've had an I G A, they've shifted to a new model where it's an MOU. So this is just the MOU now that we have a CSU Extension Director, um, you know, acknowledged, you know. Finalizing the MOU, their office, you know, will be up at CMC, CMC has their own agreement with, um. With CSU for that, and then, you know, we have built into the budget. Um, the required amount or the requested amount, it, almost sixteen thousand dollars is Lake County's contribution to the CSU Extension Director. Plus IT stuff and that, so we have all that T though.
Okay. I don't have any questions.
The only request I have to add is we haven't heard back from the state, one, the tweets to the MOU, the final version of it, so I would just ask that we approve pending final legal review.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, I'll move to approve the MOU of Colorado State University for the benefit of the engagement and extension program pending final legal review.
So moved. First, the second, second, great, uh, okay, any further?
Nothing from me.
Great, I'll call for it.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, great, that MOU is approved pending final legal review. Okay, uh, agenda item number twelve, uh, discussion and consideration of an amended public access easement to the Ark Arkansas River Community Preserve. Adding recently acquired properties.
Yes, thank you, so as you know, we entered into the public access easement for the Ark Preserve, also known as the Sean Andrew Memorial Preserve. Uh, originally on April first of twenty twenty one with Central Colorado Conservancy in coordination, coordination with the conservation easement that is held with Colorado Wood and Lands. Uh, the first access easement amendment was entered into on July fifteenth of twenty twenty one with additional properties. And a second amendment was entered into on October twenty seventh of twenty three with even more additional properties. So this third amendment includes seventy three point five five acres of additional properties, including the Ferguson and Jones properties. Or parcels uh to be included in the preserve, that closed two weeks ago on November twenty sixth. Uh, with new acreage of the preserve now totaling three hundred and forty four point seventy eight acres. Uh, this additional property does include, or included in this third amendment will not currently be open to the public. Um, with a very slight caveat, seventy two of those acres are on the west side of the highway and so will be considered not open to the public. As some of the existing western properties also sit not open to the public, um, and only one point nine nine acres. Um, the Jones parcels will technically be added into that public, um, public access to, um. More actively managed by the county, um, uh. Total acreage, so it'll have minimal impacts on our responsibilities within the access easement, so I just wanted to give a little clarification on. Where those live and why those are being added, so this is just a a third amendment to which you all have already signed, the the previous two with additional properties, throwing the parcel.
Thank you.
Don't thank me, I did no work on this.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Bryce, thank you, Marty, thank you, Central Colorado Conservancy.
Does she have anything to add?
Uh, no, that's pretty good, Summer, thanks, Jane, um, we're just really excited about it and hope you guys are excited too.
Excellent.
We do need a signature and an over here.
Okay.
Signature from over here.
Okay.
And then we can address it, Bryce.
Yeah, great, great, thank you.
Do you need that today?
Yes.
Okay.
Can be me.
Thank Bryce.
Oh, just a little recovery?
I have the official copy, that's already been signed by the two other signings, so.
Okay. Or, you see, do you need just one or all of us?
It's just one.
I think it's just two, yeah.
Just one signature.
Okay, then. We made it.
I think.
Can be me, I'm here.
After you start, be the only, yes, sorry.
As be, be, be see.
Has just name on it.
Uh, it doesn't have, it just says like, like county commissioner, our first signer.
Okay, okay. Okay, fair. Alright. Um, I'll move to approve the third amendment, public access easement, uh, on Arkansas River Community Preserve pending. No, there you go.
No.
That's it. Including the Sean Andrew Memorial Preserve.
Second motion, okay.
Uh, so no.
No further.
No, uh, call Provo?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, should we just keep going in order?
For a few, yeah.
Sure.
Okay, uh, thirteen, uh, discussion and consideration of a PSA with Brendel Group for the Lake County Climate Action Plan. Jane, you're on.
Yes, thank you again. So we did successfully receive that grant award from DOLA in October of twenty three to fund the development of this cap or climate action plan. The RFP was posted August fifteenth of this year, closed in September thirteenth, and the staff recommendation was to approve awarding the Brendel Group the bid for the project. Um, B O C C approved that, moving forward with the partnership on the October twenty fifth meeting. Uh, we drafted a PSA which was accepted, signed and returned by the Brendel Group to us on eleven twenty one. So we're seeking acceptance of this PSA and subsequent approval to begin formal engagement on the climate action plan.
Thanks. Um, I'll move to a- approve the Agreement for Services uh with the Brendel Group Incorporated.
Second motion, great.
Okay.
Call Provo, great. Call Provo?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, uh, that PSA with Brendel Group is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, agenda item number fourteen, discussion and consideration of an amendment to the PSA with Mead and Hunt for Leadville Lake County Airport Phase Two planning support services.
Oh, and Josh left, so I was curious, okay.
It's too hot, it's just.
Uh, yeah, so we're just on the uh amendment to the PSA with Mead and Hunt. Um, so I don't know if you wanna give us a quick little background on that. I know we've discussed that.
Uh, no, it's just that, uh, the next phase of that project is to do some site development uh planning.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, we've already used Mead and Hunt for the, well, Mead and Hunt facilitated the rent study through AMCG. Uh, but they're already familiar with the airport and um, so I'd recommend that we continue moving forward with Mead and Hunt in this project. Um, so uh, if we get this pro- if we start this now, we should be able to get a site plan. I think they said they provide us two, is that right, Chris? Two site plans within um, I think they said February, three months?
Yeah, so it, well, they projected, yeah, three months to complete the work.
Yeah, so if we get that in, then we we should be able to um get to a point where we can put out RFPs. If that's the route we choose to take to do hangar development at the airport um for this coming summer. That's been kind of the driving forces to finally get shovel ready um for twenty twenty five, so.
Okay, and what we talked about the with the route? Delivery of the phase one portions was the part uh doing this for the hangar area alone. Is this phase two on page four or five here? The the mapping, is that the entire area that they would plan for, which is outside?
No, I believe they said this this entire phase is all on airport planning.
Yes, it's all onsite.
Yes. So this would just include, this would just be hangar development?
Okay.
Not anything uh business park, things like that.
Okay, can uh, I mean, can we maybe update that map to
Sure, we can ask him about that.
Reflect that in the exhibit A, I think? Is that a?
Yeah, I wasn't aware that it was outside of the targeted area map, but.
Do you see it?
Yeah, I'm looking at the, looks in the packet.
It's, sorry, it's a, it's a, it's like seven of eight in that thing. It's it's it's.
And it's small enough. In the packet, yeah, I see the map that was attached to the proposal.
Yeah.
That the, or the scope and work for being admitted to the.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I believe the scope does not include anything off airport, so the map would just be the only correction that if if that's what you're asking, we could correct the map.
Yeah. Okay, that would, I would, I would like to ask for that, yeah.
Just to be clear, yeah, that shouldn't, that should be a few, but don't need to be done, so.
Okay. Um, and you're, yeah, for for, we talked about Kimly Horn giving us or not, or any conflict with our current agreement with them?
Yeah, so Kimly Horn just started. No, I I talked to them and uh just also did some research about, like, this is planning specifically. It's separate from Kimly Horn's contract, which is all the onsite engineering at the airport, so there should be no conflict there. Um, if if we were to go further than this and have Mead and do site planning and things like that, like site engineering for product projects, then we would that's where we would start to have faults with Kimly Horn. But as we're currently sitting in this phase, we're we're well cleared.
Okay.
So.
Okay. Um, I'll move to approve the amendment to the Agreement for Services with Mead and Hunt. Um, with the um update of an accurate um map per showing the study area or scoped area, please.
Second motion, great.
Nothing further from you.
Call Provo?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. So amendment to the PSA, thank you. Uh, amendment to the PSA with Mead and Hunt is approved.
You guys have a good weekend.
Do you wanna move to twenty or just leave?
Um. Let let let's try to do twenty real quick.
Okay.
If Jackie is here, I can, I could also just.
Well, I think she.
Say what mine is.
Say what, what?
What?
If we jump to twenty before Jeff has to leave the deed restriction?
She, yes.
I think Anne's on.
I was gonna say Anne's on. Oh, she's on, hey, Jackie.
Hi, Jackie.
Um. Do.
It will, it's, she has, here she comes, she has an update on this.
Okay, I do, I had some notes that I took that I wanted to discuss.
Yeah. Jackie, can you hear us?
Our audio is not working right now.
No, it doesn't sound like it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we can't hear you, Jackie, if you can run over. Do you wanna get the um other documents signed, Jeff, while we wait?
I thought we decided Sarah could do that.
Oh.
Just was one.
Okay.
Commissioner needed.
Okay, so we can.
Do you have it right now? He has it, but he needs it notarized, so we need a notary.
Do you just wanna take the fifty minute break?
Sure, we can do that. Sorry, thanks, Bryce.
Okay.
All right, I think we're ready. We're back from our break. It's one oh eight PM. Uh, Commissioner Feedler, one oh nine, depending on your device. Uh, Commissioner Feedler uh had delayed the meeting, so we'll continue on with our items of business. And um, we have proposed to jump to item twenty to maybe try and fit that conversation for, sorry, ni- well, I guess item. Posted item twenty, sorry, removed, we removed item nineteen. Um, and because we have our housing program manager here, Jackie Willian, let's just go forward with that conversation. Um, and then go back to uh item, what are we on then? Fifteen.
Fifteen, fifteen, fifteen.
Okay. Um, so Jackie's here and this uh item is the discussion and consideration of deed restrictions to be applied to the Housing Ten Two project. And that is the county's uh, twenty-four unit project. Um, Jackie, do you want to just give a little blurb and then I have a couple of comments I'd love for us to hear and go right ahead.
Okay, so the deed restriction, the intent of this is that when we build housing, this will be applied to the housing that we build. So it remains affordable for future buyers. It's not just for the buyers that are going to buy it now, but you know, down the road, there'll be a cap on what they can make on the sale of their property. So every year, it'll be two percent per year is what um, they can make on the property. And then um, it will be also income based because of the funding that we received to make the project happen. So it is based on A M I limitations. Um, this deed restriction was given to us and has been vetted by other communities. Um, Chris has had an opportunity to work on it. Uh, Sarah had some questions about it. We had on the agenda, have you approved this today? I think what we're going to propose instead is that we um, the other agenda item that was before this that we took off the agenda because the Burger Project is not ready um, to be executed. Um, we've, we'd like to propose that we have a special meeting um, coming in the next, after your seventeenth regular meeting. Um, we're anticipating getting our applications on the thirteenth, next Friday by four P M for the lottery for the Ataloga project. And so um, we wanted to keep this on the agenda today and not take it out just so that it was in front of you. You could think about it and talk about it and then we can have it on this next agenda for this next meeting if that's something that you're looking to.
I think that sounds fine with me. Um.
You want to have it on the seventeenth or you want a special?
We want a special and we want it after the seventeenth. We're just getting the applications on the thirteenth. And we won't know how many of those applications are viable um, to influence the burger conversation. So we'll want to do it at the end of that week if we can, I'll go to the very end of following.
Okay, I'll look at the calendar.
And, and then we can have both items on there.
Okay, okay. Um, thanks Jackie. Um, Chris Edwards, do you have anything on the deed restrictions specifically before I jump into my few?
Yeah.
Comments? Okay. Um, I, Jackie, on page one, we have the qualified in, in this language, we have proposed, we state qualified buyer and we're referring a lot to the community guidelines passed with the housing authority. Um, and in the document, it has qualified buyer as, as defined or what, some similar, something similar to that. As the housing authorities got, or the community guidelines. And I would propose that we change that to qualified owner. Um, as it fits our past conversations about who we're serving. Um, and that is, that is a definition in the guidelines. Um. Any, and then I don't know if we want to revise or then add some legalese to say, you know, moving this point forward through the doc, our qualified owner will be referred to as owner or something like that.
Yeah, so I think, I think sort of, unfortunately, this conversation is going to be a Chris.
Yeah.
Conversation for any changes to this document.
Okay.
Um, so.
Okay, no comment until the next, okay, I just wanted to.
I think it is just, I don't, I don't see a problem with that, but I think Chris needs to.
Okay, um, very good. And then on page three, let's see, in section one B nine, there's a reference to uh, an essential service provider, which I thought was kind of a, had been identified as a chronic issue, so just kind of noting that.
Yes.
We want to pull that. I think otherwise it reads the same as the guidelines do. Um, page four, section six, um, to be in alignment with the definition of a qualified owner. Um, I think the other counties need to be taken out of the um, that language there. Um, as the qualified owner is referring to a Lake County employee. Um, again, something to discuss, thoughtful group. Um, and then seven, page seven, um, let's see, section twelve C. It states the owner appoints the county as its attorney in and then goes on and again, I guess, uh, an attorney question, but um, it seemed like an odd. It seemed odd to me, um, so just looking for some uh, education on how or if that is actually the language that's meant to be used. But other than that, I um, don't think I had any other questions on the imposition of the deed restriction.
So I've, I've sent your concerns to Chris and so um, she'll be ready for to answer them.
Okay.
And so then, and we set up that.
Okay, and so we don't have a date determined yet, not yet.
Uh, no, I'll, we'll go, we'll look at it at calendar review today.
Okay.
It looks like maybe the nineteenth, Thursday the nineteenth might work. Um, Jeff has S D C A on his calendar, but I don't know if he's planning on actually attending that or not.
Um, so if not, then we should be good to go like February one thirty.
That was.
On the night.
Okay, yeah, so we can, we can confirm that today.
Okay, so we'll. We'll table this and the other removed agenda item for special meeting after the seventeenth of this month. Thank you. Great, all right, thanks Jackie.
Thanks Jackie.
Okay, um, and then we'll jump back to item fifteen, the discussion and consideration of an amendment to the P S A with Value West for support on commercial appraisals.
Sure, I'll leave that.
Okay.
Um, Value West is our commercial appraiser. Um, so it is uh, more efficient for us to contract this out. We've done it for quite a while.
Yes.
Value West is a great vendor, always gives us accurate commercial uh, valuations to use. So this is just um, an extension of it for the assessor's office for twenty twenty five.
Great. Oh, yeah. Um, and if that's still, let's see, where?
And the cost is twenty eight thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars a year.
So I was just trying to, usually it's been like twenty five hundred about, so, okay, great. Um. Um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the amendment to the agreement for services with Value West.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to the P S A with Value West for support of commercial appraisals. Amount of twenty eight thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars a year.
Wait, twenty eight thousand?
Yeah, twenty eight thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars a year.
Oh, okay.
So I'm reading. Yeah.
Um, second, for the purpose of discussion. Um, I thought, I remember that being like two thousand dollars, twenty five hundred dollars. Are we adding a significant amount of properties to this?
I don't know, just mass appraisal and support of commercial property valuation for assessment properties.
It's the same rate.
Is it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I think that might have been like a monthly payment you've seen in the past.
Okay, okay.
I think I remember last year being twenty five thousand, not twenty five hundred.
Okay, okay. Yeah, or maybe, oh, I think I'm remembering, um, our request.
Because he's done individual ones too.
I think maybe I'm remembering a request for assistance with the County Board of Equalization. And then, when we had some commercial petitioners.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Very good, okay.
Good memory.
Um, well, apparently not. Um. Yeah, uh, all righty, uh, any further discussion?
Me.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you very much. Um. Okay, sorry, let me catch up here. All right, item number sixteen. Discussion and consideration of amendment, addendum to the P A, P S A professional service agreement with D M C auditing and consulting L L C for auditing services for the fiscal year ending December thirty first, twenty twenty four. Go ahead, Tim.
Sure, I'll do that. Also, take a moment to introduce you to Candace Bryan.
Hi Candace, welcome.
She's our new finance director. Um. But uh, this P S A is with our auditing firm, D M C Auditing and Consulting L L C. Um, if you remember, a few months ago, we awarded um, a long-term uh, five years, uh, five-year bid to D M C Consulting. You know, every year we got to uh, we need to addendum, addendum or extend their agreement. So this is the request to extend their agreement to complete the twenty twenty four audit.
I don't have any questions for you.
I don't have any questions either.
Great, do you want to take a stab at?
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to approve an addendum to the P S A with D M C Auditing Consulting L L C for auditing services for the fiscal year ending December thirty first, twenty twenty four.
And I will second. Further discussion?
Further discussion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you very much. Onto item seventeen, discussion and consideration of revisions to the Lake County Employee Handbook. Uh, we have our human resources director, Zoe Bergstrom here. And following a work session we had.
Yes.
I can't remember the date, but some weeks ago now. Um, do you want us to pull up, um?
Yeah, we should pull that up.
Okay. Okay.
It does include everything we discussed before.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Okay, so like I said, this doesn't include everything that we discussed in the work session. Um, probably made some edits and these are things that we didn't have no agreement on and um, Chris looked over as well. So this first one is removing the three-quarter time and on employee classification, making everyone either part-time or full-time. Um, anyone working over thirty hours or more is going to be considered full-time. Um, the reason for the thirty hours is because of um, the Affordable Care Act requires employers to um, provide health insurance for any colleagues that are working above thirty hours. And we are already doing that. Um, this change is just going to allow those colleagues to have a full holiday, vulgar event as well. So it's not a huge change really, but it's really hard for us currently to track who these folks are.
Okay. Okay. Does anyone want to give me the thingy or?
Yes, but you see the fire waste.
All right, and then this next one is um, an edit to our hiring promotions and transfers section. It's really just following what we currently do, so following our requisition, requisition template. Instead of requiring them to supply all this information, we've created a template for them to follow for that. Um, we don't do a formal intake meeting, but we do just have an open discussion with our managers. So it's not a formal one that we've um, previously used. And then um, just some other information about the distribution of these vacancies. We're really only required to post it internally. Um, we don't have to post it externally. Let's just scroll down a little bit further there. So we are just taking that out, that requirement, so. On our end.
Okay, I have a quick question up here and it's probably just not, um. Uh, thinking about vacancies and then chatting with you, but
Yeah.
I think the understanding also is that they're speaking with Tim as the manager to decide whether or not we're actually filling that vacancy, right?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Right.
All of that has to be um, approved before we've been posted.
Yeah.
If somebody leaves, we have a discussion before posting it.
All righty. Um.
It's a large section, so.
And that, and this one is just not requiring us to post at all outside the agency?
Um, we just don't have to.
Okay.
Technically, um, so we do have people who we do promote internally, um, that sort of a thing. Or they're a referral into the position. We don't have to um, post it externally.
Okay. Is that, is that typical?
Well, that's the, well, as I say, that's with the law now is you don't have to.
Okay.
Post it externally.
Okay. Following, yeah, no, a lot of these are helpful to just know that we're just, I mean, I think all of them almost are just following.
A lot.
State law, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Where would you like me to go? Did I go past?
No, we can keep going through this section, um, send our job offers. We're the only ones that ever send out a job offer. Hiring managers should not be doing that without us reviewing that first and getting approval.
Yeah.
Um, so that's just putting that in there. Um, and then just clarifying, when we do background checks, we do background checks for anyone new and coming into the organization. Um, and then we can also do them if people are changing roles and we haven't done one in a while. Um, and if you scroll down a little bit more, we just haven't languished in that. We may also need or require a background check, like I said, if something's changing roles.
Can you scroll around a little bit or back, back up?
Yeah.
Just a tad there. Are there, are there any jobs or positions that you would, you think that it would be appropriate to do uh, some kind of review of like social media postings and things like that?
We can't do that.
Can't do that, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Um, for performance evaluations, we're just removing the last bit of this section because it's not consistent with what we're doing. We do performance evaluations twice a year. And the one in August is when um, your lunch program rare increase. Previously, I'm not sure when, I think we were doing it in January, but we're just removing that.
Okay. No questions? Good.
Um, just scroll up just a little bit more. We are proposing to remove the conflict resolution panel just because it's pretty redundant in place with the um, disciplinary action um, process. So just removing that, cleaning it up. And then under pay periods, previously, we would try to um, provide coworkers with their paychecks on the Thursday before payday. It's just not like possible and it's kind of a promise that we can't keep. Um, so it makes it really difficult for both sides really.
Okay.
Um, and then finally, um, just removing the six-month probationary period. It currently says that you can't take vacation within the first six months of employment. We really want to encourage people to be using their vacation and personal time because of the liability to the county to keep that on there.
Mm-hmm.
And just to clarify that, it's sort of.
And that's the end. Okay. I don't have any questions for you, question, no, okay. Um. Do you want to take a stab at a motion, approving the revisions presented?
Sure, yeah, I make a motion to approve the revisions to Lake County Employee Handbook.
As presented?
As discussed and presented.
Okay. Thanks. I'll second. Any further discussion?
No.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you Zoe.
I have one more.
Yeah, all right, number eighteen is uh, discussion and consideration of Resolution twenty four dash forty-two, observation of holidays for twenty twenty five. Mm-hmm. Where are you going to enter these? No, come to. Oops. I'm just gonna close like.
Thanks for the reservation.
Yeah.
One more.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so this is sticking pretty consistent with what we have right now. It's actually um, fewer holidays because for um, Fourth of July last year, we had an extra day to observe, but.
Okay. Pretty sure, go on, any questions, can you share those?
No.
Okay. Um, and it, or taken, or, oh my goodness.
I'm making a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, I'm making a motion to approve Resolution number twenty twenty four dash forty two. Observation of Holidays for twenty twenty five as presented and discussed.
Okay, I have a second, any further discussion?
No.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks Zoe. Great, and we removed item number nineteen. Um, and we'll move that to a special meeting after a date to be
I'm waiting to do that discussion.
determined. Um, after our second December meeting. Um, so we'll jump to the last item on our agenda, which is the calendar and work session, agenda review. Sandra, take us, take away.
Do you have this?
Yes. Thank you.
Alright, you got your calendars up?
Yes.
Can you share it in Zoom please?
Yeah.
Hi Candace.
We need to add, um, thank you Candace. Let's add for agendas going forward, the instructions for people to sign up for the notifications and all that.
Okay.
Um. Alright, I already talked to Sammy, so I just ran it up, but I talked to Sammy, we got regular posts for that, but people are um, not understanding how they can sign up for website notifications, so maybe just add that to the agendas, so it's.
Oh, okay.
A footnote?
A footnote, just, yeah.
Uh-huh, okay, sure.
How to get push notifications, how to. Yeah.
Right.
Anyway, sorry to do that.
So like for the notice, for the notify me is where it's timed up?
Yeah, yeah, for the notify me and the.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Perfect. Okay. Um, so on the ninth, um, showing the Lake County Force Health Council meeting, um, at one P M. Yeah, um, plus we've got the planning commission meeting at four P M.
And C C sent everything out yesterday.
Yes, okay, for the planning commission.
That should be in your teams as well.
Okay. Great. And, uh, Lake County School District Board of Education regular meeting, five thirty.
We should note, you guys, I think they are going to be discussing the parcels of plan, uh, these that we were interested in.
Oh, on Monday night?
One, one two million, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, yeah, we could put that on my calendar anyway. Thanks, Lauren.
Right, well, on the tenth, um, we have the work session at nine A M. Work session at one P M. And Lake County Public Library Board of Trustees meeting at six thirty P M.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I have the Harrison Master Plan open house, the seniors that are, sorry, it's three.
On the tenth?
The tenth.
Oh, yeah.
Is that on Tim's calendar?
No. Um, we can, uh,
I can see.
We'll send you all the details from that.
Yes. Yes.
And that's all of us?
Everybody.
Go, okay.
Alright. Eleventh.
Yeah, I think just Jeff has that on his calendar. Okay, sorry, the eleventh.
That's okay, uh, community coffee, uh, eight thirty. Arkansas Basin Roundtable Executive Board meeting at ten thirty. Um, the roundtable regular meeting at twelve thirty. And Airport Advisory Board meeting at one.
I believe that was canceled.
This one is?
Yeah.
Um, okay, and moving on to the twelfth. Uh, Lando Sanitation District Board of Directors meeting. This is a reoccurring one, but I didn't see it on anybody's calendar, so I'll go check web.
I'll have to double check their website and chat to Josh.
Yeah. Check to make sure that's still going on. Um, and Recreation Advisory Board regular meeting.
We checked with Karen, cause I think she updated the location today.
Okay.
I've got, I got a question for you guys, um. When are we gonna discuss and make a decision on, um, what we're gonna do around the, um, the, um, whatever it is, in support of immigrant community? And I think I, I'd like to get something formally done before they need to hear on that.
Yeah.
We can look at the, the next two work sessions look fairly full with, uh, budget stuff, I think, correct? So what did you think?
On a resolution or letter of support, whatever it is, we decide to do in support of our immigrant community. Can we do, put it on the agenda for the next meeting, regular meeting?
Do we have to have a work session about that first, or?
Yes, can I go?
No, it's a meeting, especially.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you wanna, if you wanna request to put a, something like that on the next agenda, then, yeah, just.
Well, I, I'd like to make that request.
Yeah, so, so, yeah.
Seventeen.
Seventeenth would be the next one.
Just, we, we, is we having language for?
Yes.
Yeah, it is a little bit.
And is, um, the language of the agenda item?
Yeah.
Okay. Are we, am I understanding correctly, the sheriff is drafting a letter, are you and the sheriff drafting?
So you guys have a draft, um, sheriff is happy to join in said draft or send his own letter.
Okay, maybe he was gonna write his own, okay.
I mean, it's pretty, it's more impactful for the four of you to say something.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, uh, or, yeah, or separate letters.
Okay, okay.
So.
Alright, we're connected, Sheriff, you make sure we are ready for that, alright, great.
Alright, and then on the thirteenth, we have, uh, the B S C C special meeting at nine A M. And then Lake's Community Coffee at nine A M. And, um, we have a C D O E hearing at one P M. Mister Wattsworth.
It's just the one, right?
I think there's two.
Two.
Yeah, yeah, two of them. And I'll, um, he sent me the information, so with Liz's help, I'll draft that agenda for, for that and get that posted as soon as possible.
If he has all that information, yeah, if you could like forward that to us in an email, did he send that to us?
Yeah, yeah. No, he sent it to me.
Okay.
Um, Liz would like to have it more in a formal, like, agenda format because it's just an email with information.
Okay.
But I can go ahead and forward it to you, so have a little more time to look at it.
That'd be good.
It's gonna be the same information, just in a little better format.
Okay, thank you.
Um, okay. So. Okay, so for the work session on the tenth at nine A M. Um, first up is Full Circle update on the Unmet Needs Program, which offers relief to Lake County renters and primary residential homeowners to alleviate the negative impact of property tax on Lake County residents. Um, led by Udelia Contreras and Jennifer Young and Stacy Contreras. Um, then we've got fourth quarter budget overview to include county year to date, year end projections and budgeted amounts for twenty twenty four revenues and expenditures. Overview of proposed twenty twenty five budget for Lake County Government.
What date is this center?
This is the tenth.
The tenth, okay.
Mm-hmm, at nine A M, this is the first one, yeah.
At nine?
Uh, discussion of potential mill levy scenarios for twenty twenty five to assess their impact on revenue generation and taxpayer obligations. And number five, discussion of certificate of participation for the Lake County Jail and Courthouse renovation. And, we got added or stood down, and long range financial plans. Have to stop listing the next one too?
Do we have a proposal from Full Circle, those requests, I see our last agreement?
No, this is an update on the twenty twenty four work.
Okay, great.
It's Mr. Delius report out.
Okay.
Okay, and then at the one P M, um, consideration of funding to local community partners for twenty twenty five. So I just need to say, I sent out an email to community partners, they'll be here to do a short presentation, they'll have small, uh, memos before you watch the review. We gave them the hundred and fifty thousand dollar number, understanding you can go lower or higher based on actions you make on Friday.
Our hundred and fifty thousand dollar ceiling that we've put in place so far for that entire budget, yeah.
Yeah, and I love the job, that's where we're at now, it could go lower, it could go higher, but this is your time to present. And I don't think we're expecting them, you won't make decisions, it's just a here, we have to say.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
And with your guys' last thing, I will go ahead and get these, uh, agendas posted today, as good as Friday.
Yeah.
I think that looks great.
Um, I know, I keep getting started.
I know, these last two weeks have been crazy. Um, I did have one question for you, uh, typically we put the city council regular meetings on our calendar. Um, but I noticed today that the work sessions are not, would you like to add those?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and then if you wanna pull up your calendars again real quick and just as far as the special meeting goes, um, I took a quick glance and like I said, it looks like on the nineteenth, which would be a Thursday. Um, maybe like around eleven thirty, um, like I said, Jeff has that, uh, S D C E A on his calendar, but it's not on anybody else's.
I hope he won't be here, he won't be here.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't, he won't be here?
No, it's, it's a song to Crystal.
Okay. Uh, okay, um. I think Friday, it looked like there was another meeting.
They need to be too early?
Uh, I don't know, I could confirm with that.
I think that's such a gen, yeah, yeah.
We've got time on the eighteenth.
Yeah, I, I would suggest, well, because Lyle suggested, we do the seventh, the regular meeting seventeenth, and she asked, she didn't think that was in the top, and then she removed the application and stuff and stuff.
Yeah.
Cause I think she said they got him, they'll get him on the thirteenth.
Yeah.
Close is on the thirteenth, so we'll start looking at him and expect, yeah, after that.
Okay, let me talk to her today and see if, if that is gonna be too soon, um, and if it is, then we'll, maybe we'll try through that Friday. We'll try and squeeze it in, and if not, um, we'll look at the following week or something.
Chris, when are we gonna have the motocross park lease?
It's, well, would, I'm just finishing from the last of the comments that y'all sent yesterday.
Okay, and then when?
And if there aren't any other comments, then I'll clean it up for Tim to send to, to Kim and Jeff.
And then?
And my request was to have it on the seventh meeting, the seventeenth.
The seventeenth, okay, that was my question, okay, yeah.
Yes.
I haven't been able to get through it, I think you could send it to Kim and Jeff, but I am gonna look at it and I, yeah, just, I mean, I might have comments of, like.
Well, we can send it, just say it to work, and, yeah, we can send it and say it's a, the current working draft, we wanna get it in front of them because it is scheduled for consideration on the seventeenth.
Okay.
If you want to do that, we can.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I, Jeff and I spoke on it yesterday and we're gonna agree on the, the comments and things as well.
Um. Okay, sorry. Maybe double check with Jeff too, if you would, on the, on the song read of Crystal, whether he, you know.
Okay. Okay.
Is, is just to verify whether he plans on that before we rule it out entirely.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yep.
Alright. Um, okay, anything else on calendar and planning and agenda reviews? No? Um, so our consent agenda is last, I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the, to approve the consent agenda.
Second, anything further discussion?
No.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Um, and at one forty six, we'll adjourn.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.